Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's Greenwood City Council meeting on this Monday, July tenth, twenty twenty-three, at approximately seven oh six P. M. Ms. Derry, would you call the roll, please?
Yes. Casey Brown.
Here.
Ralph Baker.
Here.
Tim Terry.
Here.
Martha Rayner.
Here.
And Michael.
Here.
Ron Powell.
Here.
Paul Corr.
Thank you very much. If everyone would please rise at this time when we begin our meeting with a prayer led by Brother Trent Hampton from Calgary Temple and followed by pledge of allegiance from Jeff Turner.
Lord, we love you. Thank you for another day in a great city of Greenwood, and for all the gifts that you've given us, prosperity, well-planned growth, and like-minded people to try to improve the city and the world, God. Ask that you would help us, you would lead us, God, guide us, direct us, give us divine thought, divine planning, so that it's well-planned, that it's thought out beyond even what we can get credit for, that we know it had to be a miracle, that it's over, eh, God? Ask that you would help us, you would give us unity as we live, live for you and lead for you, Lord, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge. I pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we concede it? Trent already escaped. There he is. No pressure on the plan. Thank you so much for the prayer. Appreciate you.
If it goes bad, it's your fault.
Yes, sir.
If it's good, it's not.
Yeah, we all know. Thank you. All right. Moving on to the approval, I'd like to ask the council's consideration approval of minutes for the June fifth, twenty twenty-three regular city council meeting. They have a motion in a second.
Ms. Brown.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Terry.
Yes.
Ms. Rayner.
Yes.
McDaniel.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
You.
Thank you. Recognizations and acknowledgements. This will recognize everyone here, I think. I'm certainly not what that means, but thank you for being here tonight and acknowledge your presence. But I want to start out tonight's meeting with thanking, is Casey even in here? There he is, right there. Casey Craig is our new, has been our new now for a year-ish, not quite a year, because this was his first Freedom Fest this last Saturday. And I want to go on record, I believe it might have been maybe the best one we've had, the largest one we've had, everything, and it's kind of funny, Casey, now we're talking, it looks like it's perfectly ran, and it was very well-run. There are always some issues behind the scenes, right, Casey? The people don't know, and that's what makes it a very good festival. But I want to thank Casey personally and give him a hand. He'll be the first one to tell you that he had a great committee to help make this thing happen, and he did. He had a lot of volunteers. In fact, on that note, I have some volunteers that were folks that hourly, they did get paid, but they were here not because we forced them, but had several employees work for Freedom Fest and from Parks Department, who was, and I'll probably miss some of these names that I'm supposed to know, but Jeff Erskine, Lance Young, Kayden Erskine, father and son team, by the way, you've got to watch him work.
Co-workers.
Co-workers, that's right, that's right. But what is the boss there? They've made that very clear. Street Department David Patton, AKA Gonda, David Sage, Kim Rouse, and Planning Department Hunter Michaels. I know, but in eighteen, twenty hours, so much he couldn't hardly walk the next day. So thank you, Hunter, and the Police and Fire Department, of course, were here. Thank you, guys, for knowing what you did to keep us safe and all of that. And Daniel, Daniel didn't do anything. I'm kidding. Danielle Smith was a big part of this, too, so thank you, Danielle, for hanging out. She kept saying she handed up two thousand T-shirts, but she did, because I gave six away myself, so it was only a thousand.
Lots of bunch of the employees had rolled those.
Yes, lots of, lots of hands on the, on the T-shirts rolling them before they were given away, so thank you.
And Charlotte.
Sorry?
And Charlotte.
Charlotte, were you there?
I'm kidding, I'm joking.
Too many to name, and I've already messed up, I missed some folks, but just a great, great festival. Lance is not here tonight for me to say anything good about him, and I'll do it because he's not here. Several years ago, as you know, and AC was a big part of that, a lot of, a lot of you councilmen were, it was decided something needed to be, we needed to step up our game with the Freedom Fest, and it has become all of that and baggage.
Was it several years ago or?
Up to you.
Upteen.
Upteen, upteen years ago. I don't know how many. It was decided to, to make it better, and it is, it is great, so. Now, you've done to set the bar, Casey, so Fall Festival better be awesome.
Fall Festival.
Okay? But anyway, thank you, everybody.
My best.
Do what?
I'll do my best.
Okay.
He has a forest, he doesn't need to.
He should, yeah. But thank you all. I heard later, I think Jeff posted something, or I saw it on Facebook, it was the hottest day of the year.
Hottest day on record, on record ever.
On earth?
Yeah.
On earth? How crazy is that? So I don't feel so bad about going on, taking a couple hours to break, and then, so anyway, it was fantastic. Moving on, committee reports, South Special County Boys and Girls Club, Kenny, did you hand one in, or?
I put one in.
Okay. And you're on the schedule for later agenda. So we got that report, SRCA, Parks Commission, Wastewater Commission. Yes, sir, Mr. Joe.
Just going to, to the council, want to thank Casey, the half of Parks Commission, her great job, and all some volunteers that all participated, made a difference.
Yep, absolutely. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Those committee people question there or wait till later?
Uh, you can, I think it's fine to wait. We've been doing that, so, yeah.
And I didn't know if I needed to wait till the department head area or council forum, but I was asked today, or actually, I was asked about two weeks ago about trail lights. I'll write this as a copy to them.
Okay, okay. Starting today? Okay.
They have a hundred and twenty days to substantial completion, so four months should be topped out, three months.
One of the jogger, folks that jogged in the morning was asking me, she said, you told me, you promised me those about five or six years ago.
Yeah.
I know.
It takes a while.
Yeah. Lot of bureaucracy down there, isn't it?
Yeah.
Thank you.
They're working out there today.
Anything else for any of the committee members or the commission members that are here? Want to move on? If not, citizen forum, I do not have anyone that has signed up this evening, but I know Ms. Charlotte Derry would like to speak to the council this evening.
I appreciate the opportunity to come down, take a few minutes every time, talk about something heavy on heart. See, council mayor. Take a few moments of your time, I'd appreciate your consideration in removing the city plaque as a new type of bridge at Greenwood Lake and correct it to include the full elected body of the city of Greenwood. The plaque currently containing all the names of the city councilman mayor and most members was installed by Councilman McDaniel despite a request not to install it correctly. The plaque mentioned with purchase of the city funds and should not display only the select elected official exponents that were chosen by Mr. McDaniel. Furthermore, when I received word that nine names not listed included, and attempts were made by myself and the mayor to correct it, Mr. McDaniel resorted to name-calling using an insult such as childish, manipulative, and self-serving. I've served at Greenwood City as part of, as you know, for over a decade, and I faithfully have been a employer for forty-five years. So I do not, I do not understand why I'm being treated this way. I find it appalling, extremely disrespectful, and an insult to my position here. I am a part of this body. This is a separate plaque, there's two plaques. One was installed that contains the names of Parks Commission, its member councilman mayor. I've been actively involved along the way on this project as far as recording the city's history on it, I've done checks for it, making sure proper procedures were followed so that we don't get trouble with auditors down the way, nothing embarrassing, following state law and all of that, as I do. All of this, plus I serve as executive member of the Parks Commission. Yep, my name is missing. The plaque was there to reflect our history, and it is incomplete, and it should be corrected. In closing, a proofing email was distributed by Mr. McDaniel, and the omitted names were added and returned to him, and gone off that plaque before it was set for execution. So it's installed without full representation, therefore, an active choice was clearly made. I respectfully ask the city council to do the right thing, correct existing plaque and reinstall it. The mayor has kindly offered to make another plaque, put it on the office and sign it by the woods, and I also, that just doesn't get there for me. I know it was expensive, but y'all, I have a thick skin and this injury. Mr. McDaniel's behavior and actions to me during this process are unacceptable. Respect, honor, courtesy, and then my thanks should be the city of Greenwood standard, and my hope is that this body will do what is right. There are pictures of the plaque that I refer to, and you haven't seen it. Pass it on down. Thank you for your time.
Will we address that?
It's up to you. I think it's strictly up to you, council.
The request is to the council, so, I mean, I'll, I'll respond if you want to hear the response. I'll leave it to you if you want to.
Counsel, what's your pledge?
Yeah, I think you've got my turn to respond.
The, I mean, as you all know, this was a very long process. The Concomitant first made the draft, the Cuthbert family paid for it, Parks Committee contributed to it, other private donations, as you want, all the funds. The plaque thing I thought would be one of the most simple pieces of the whole half-million-dollar bridge that we built, turned out to be a very complicated situation. I had no idea, very expensive, five thousand dollars for the two plaques. My original intent was to just have one plaque, one simple plaque, on a stand like what's over at the Caves. I got the pricing on all that, and it was upgraded, and then the printing company said you can't put all of that on one plaque. I said, well, I don't know why, it's a, I can print it all in newspaper and read it, and we can't print it that way, I don't understand. So they sent it to printers, came back, said, no, you can't do it. So, yes, I sent it to Casey, having proofed it. I wanted everybody's name on it. Travis Plumbers, elected official. Tom Marsh spent a lot of time and effort on this. I thought Tom Marsh's name should be on it. If it's about elected officials, my Camby and Lance Terry were here all of last year, you know, so there's a lot of people that did things that I wanted their names to be on it. It was not about Charlotte. I never picked Charlotte out of the crowd to keep out. I sent it to the printer, they said, you can't do that, you're going to have to make two plaques. They sent it back and said, here's what'll fit. If you notice, the font of one is smaller than the other. And so I just said, you know, this is, this is about this project, so I'm going to, the four people that were involved in the project, I'm going to try to get them on there, and there's some that I can't get on there. So I never singled Charlotte out, I never intended to single anybody out. Yes, Charlotte called the printing company and asked them to put their name on the plaque, her name on the plaque, and the printing company called me and told me that. I told Charlotte I thought she was being challenged and manipulative to go behind my back and call the printing company. And I still think that, frankly, but I don't care. I told the mayor, I did what I did, I did the best I could, I wasn't trying to offend anybody about anything. It was a big project, it was about the Cuthbert family, and this is all a black cloud over it, over one individual. I don't care. If you guys wanted to go redo the plaque, I told the mayor, I've done my part, I'm turning it over to the Parks Department and the city. If you want to replace the plaque, that's fine with me. I have no problem with whose name you want to put on there. It makes me no difference either way.
Okay, thank you. Any comments from the council regarding this? And or questions? So to kind of reiterate, if you want to call it, I have suggested that we buy, purchase another plaque and place it. Daniel knows this, Charlotte knows this, I talked to Tom about it. My suggestion is, I mean, I have no knowledge of the idea of removing the plaque, but I think it is fitting that we purchase another plaque with all, all elected officials on it, including Mr. Travis, who's the newest, I guess, well, Roger. But that's my two cents, so whatever. Or, council, if you want to vote on to do something, or if you want to let alone, move on, it's up to you. I'm asking council.
By the way, there's some photos on your tablets from Tom Cuthbert that he brought me when he was alive, and the lake and different things, pictures that he took, he wanted them to give, for me to give them to the planning commission. That's a while back, you can probably see what your number on there somehow, but just to share with you, he was also a great guy. He wrote a letter of support, good in the Greenwood Democrat at the time I first ran for election, called me the jewel of Greenwood, very touching, very sweet. I use that plaque all the time, and I'm not going to go there because I know I have discarded like some garbage off of that plaque, that's the way I feel. And I have a thick skin to hold, I do, but this was different, this hit different. You want to stay there in silence? It gives me a message as well. I will survive this as I have other things around here. Say my piece? Thank you.
How much is the new plaque?
I have no price for the new plaque yet. I think the original plaques that are out there now that Daniel had placed are worth around, were about a piece, what, what Tom and I talked about was kind of like more what Daniel was talking about the first time, and it could be any plaque, it doesn't matter to me, but I think you could, there are different ways to put a plaque out there, like Daniel did on the rock, you could put one freestanding on a pedestal, like you see on the trail head of the trails, you know, through town. So I've not got a price for it yet, and I haven't had the opportunity to do that, so.
I appreciate your actions, thank you.
And there is, there are funds.
Feel free to leave my name off of it, make your point somehow, and.
No, that's all proper.
So, answer your question, which power, I don't have a poll yet.
To me, like, there's plenty of room on that plaque. There's empty spaces.
I think we're getting too, too personal here for a council meeting, to be honest.
Yeah, it probably is new owners, or something like that.
Anything from council to make a vote or not a vote, or is no, no action to be taken at this time? I'll further investigate another plaque, get, get a price, and let you know. Does that sound good?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I'll do that. I'm not sure. And again, I want to sign up, so we'll move on to, I'm sorry, financial report, Mr. Tom Marshall.
Now we talk about money. So I'm going to share with you a little brief financial synopsis, because Thursday night, just make sure you have it down on the calendar, it's Thursday night, six o'clock, on the thirteenth, is legislative session, where we're going into much greater detail, and we're specifically to individual departments. So your key statistics on revenue streams, the city sales and use tax is up, above budgeted growth, we have a four-point-six percent increase. Our county sales tax, as far as what we budgeted and what we're achieving right now, is flat at zero percent growth, and the advertising and promotion tax revenue is up three-point-six-three percent above what we budgeted. Our cash flow is down three-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand, four-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars, one-point-one-seven percent. There's a lot of reason for that, a lot of that has to do with some of the capital expenses picking up. So you look down at the capital expenses on your key financial data, and your one-point-one million dollars spent so far on a seven-point-three million dollar budget of fifteen-point-two-nine percent, but that does not include the city leg bridge project or the Center Street sidewalk ramp projects. Those are not in that seven-point-three million. The budget does include budgeted, budget resolutions that were done, as well as street resurface projects, even though street resurface projects is considered more of a, just a resurfacing, it is part of a capital improvement, so that's why it's listed in there. And a complete detail will be distributed on that Thursday, of where each department is against what they're budgeting.
And that's at six P. M.?
Six P. M.
Thank you, sir.
You want?
Good question, Mr. Marshall. Thank you, sir. Agenda additions, we do have one this evening, I have number thirteen to be added with council's approval. I just put cars, weight increase, let's get out of the bag. Jason?
Thanks.
You're welcome. So if you'll add that, council, good with that? Discussion of rate increase, how about that? Yes, sir.
I wanted to add amendment to, amendment to private club.
Okay, so number fourteen is amendment to private club ordinance or anyone?
We don't know what he asked, but the specimen will get there.
Okay. Any others?
Amendment eighteen dash zero four.
Eighteen dash zero four. What'd you say, I'm sorry?
Eighteen dash zero four.
Okay.
Fourth street.
Okay. All unfinished business, number one is the city attorney, ordinance updating city attorney duties with first reading. No, okay. You want more discussion, or any questions for the city attorney regarding, we don't have, we don't have an ordinance prepared, it's just, right, right, okay.
I guess it was just the board had last week, crap. Just, no?
There's never been one.
Well, moving, something that's outlined, we have one that's on the board.
You have one that's in place, yes.
But were you going, were you going to draft the new one, Travis?
Honestly, I've been really busy this month with other city matters. I was out, I'll be class with my family on vacation, so it's kind of been knocked down on this, been pretty busy.
Just table? Just table? Sure. We're on the process. Make a motion to re-table this, three, four, ten.
Have a motion, say it's a table?
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Rayner?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Number two is planning building, Mr. Bell, ordinance repealing and replacing ordinance, number twenty-two dash thirteen zoning regulations previously tabled, third reading.
Hey, your counsel, Mr. Terry, I'm requesting a third final reading to repeal or replace ordinance twenty-two thirteen of the Greenwood zoning ordinance. All the changes that may that have been requested, it was tabled last, last month to make a minor change that had been made, you can note about the shaded areas on the attached ordinance that you have on your path, so I would ask for a third final reading on this ordinance so we can move forward.
These minor changes were on the first page, exhibit DDC.
They're all, all through there. Anything that's been added since y'all last saw it, it's darker shaded, I think. Hunter added just a couple of things darker shaded.
So is this, this is the thing that started, that changed with the, because of the new store?
Yeah, yeah.
Is there anything in these zoning regulations that talk about sidewalks?
Uh, no. We have separate sidewalk boards.
As in the whole luau, that sort of thing, that?
You know, we're saying, we're setting one, we're done by zero-six-zero-four.
Yeah, I believe that's it.
Zero-six-zero-four applied to what's going on on Center Street?
On Center Street.
Yeah. Like, like the current mini-stores we have, why do they not have sidewalks?
They, they have sidewalk feet.
I want to talk about that when we get to the department. I make a motion to place this on a third reading.
Second.
Have a motion to second to place the ordinance on third reading by title.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Ms. Rayner?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
In order to reveal or replacing funding ordinance, please be there at the [inaudible].
Thanks, sir. I do appreciate the legends in the back, or whatever, the crafts or charts, or whatever works, or like that, the child's work to put in that, and having the task, that's really good.
I worked on that. I worked on that, made it more livable, made it easier to read, and so, thank you. I like to call it handy for it, thank you.
None? Ordinance is for [inaudible]. Yes. All right. Number three is finance department resolution to amend by different senior center property real estate taxes previously tabled.
Hey, Tom, what's this?
So, here's what happened, and I've sent out a memo to everybody, I'm sure everybody read it, and now understand what was going on. The seller's proceeds, an amount of money was withheld over entitled in order to pay the property taxes that we do in twenty-twenty-three, four, two. Those sellers' proceeds then were remitted back to the city and redeposited that money in order to pay the property taxes on behalf of the seller, because we now own the property, and the tax bill would come to the owner of the property. So it is not taxpayers' dollars, it is the seller's dollars, we've taken out of the proceeds, and the problem was that we got the bill in twenty-twenty-three, and yours truly did not budget the five thousand as a carryover item on our budget. So we have a mismatch right now where the revenue is and where the expense is. That's not in your budget, and all this resolution does is match the revenue and expenses, puts the budget there for the payment of these taxes. The money is there, it's ready to be, it has been remitted, because it's required to be remitted, but if you don't want to do the resolution, it's still going to be an expense on our books, it's required, and I could do a journal entry to move the money from, a reversing journal entry to correct last year's books to this year, just to make it match, but this is the easiest route, and it's the, it's the technical route. So it's up to you.
I'll take it, I'll approve it. Second. They have motion to second?
I'd like for the, if we could, also for this, I mean, for this gets reported, that this letter, this explanation goes in there for location.
You have motion to second, did you want to question?
I was just saying that, you know, it seemed like, you know, there was really no, I mean, urgency to, to, to have this paid for, I mean, I, I mean, it's not really delinquent till October, the fifteenth, right, or something like that. I mean, I think you could have been, you know, waited till you were here, or whatever, to have really thoroughly explained this, to have created confusion that it was done, you know.
I understand, man, but here's the deal, the money, we. I, I understand that, but here's the deal, the money, we were in trust of the money. And so when the bill came, we paid it with the money that's not our money. We said, we have it, bill's here, pay it, get rid of it. That's what they did, not knowing that I didn't have that line on the margin of the budget. That's all it was. So we had a big misinterpretation of what all that was, whether we're tax exempt or not, we are. And that had nothing to do with our current taxes on standards. So everything, everything's kosher. I understand where you're coming from, but like I said, this was a, this was a trust issue. We had money that was trusted to us to pay. Had we done it the other way and said, oh, seller, pay your taxes, we'll, we'll trust you to hold that money and pay it when the bills due. And the one that would never have been allowed, but had it been and they didn't pay, then we got a lien on our property. So we didn't like that. That's the only reason we could have got rid of it when we did, because we were tightening up the trust to the... We also paid our taxes then, but we lucky they don't.
Any questions? Thank you, Tom, for that explanation, I know.
Did you agree to your motion to vote?
Oh, sorry, we have, we do have motion second, sorry. Well, now, I'm gonna talk about the center, but on a different topic, go ahead.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Raymar?
Yes.
Dan?
Powell? Yes.
Thank you. I just want to touch on the, on the update real quick and maybe a little out of place, but it's not on the agenda anyway. So I got a text message, or I'm sorry, an email from Travis Bartlett, who is the architect on the, on the center itself, can do the facility. And it reads as, all, to all of us, we are approved, and he's referring to the grant. We already knew we were approved for the grant, but what he's referring to is the paper, which leads up. Once you get approved for a grant, you're nowhere near ready to spend the money, it takes a while to get everything going. So here's what it says, our plan for bidding is July the sixteenth, first advertisement, July the twenty-third, second advertisement, July the twenty-sixth, a pre-bid meeting. And on August the third, we'll have a bid opening on the five hundred thousand dollar, I mean, it's not on the grant, it's to remodel the building with the half million dollar grant we got from Arkansas Department of, um, yes, A D E C. Right? Yes. Any questions on that? I just want to give you a date more, it's, it's happening, it's just taking a while to y'all, all for step one in a row. Okay? All right, uh, thank you for that. We'll move on to number four, which is council. Uh, this was a discussion we had with Mr. Kennedy about the lighting, the boys and girls' softball fields. Anything on that? I think, I think this was kind of tabled last month, and if you guys ask, I can be back on the agenda, we have further discussions. I'm sorry, any other ones on the agenda? There is.
I was just, Travis and council, appreciate you all listening. Uh, I was talking to Mr. Tom and he was giving me some information and that and everything. Actually gave me some marching orders and everything. So I called Michael Keown, who is probably the biggest future, well, I say tournament director in the country. And he actually, he's from Alabama, he does his tournaments at Springdale. Uh, Springdale kind of figured it out before everybody, they just voted another sixteen point three million to put in their facilities. But the economic impact of a tournament for Springdale and their study is two hundred and fifty dollars a player, okay? Now, that also includes in that a hundred, twenty-five to a hundred and fifty in hotels, now, we don't have hotels. So for us, it would be a hundred dollars, that's food, gas, if they get gas here and everything, on the average is what they... So a twenty-team tournament, a softball tournament and everything, will generate right at twenty thousand dollars is what their study has said and everything. Which goes along with a lot that I've read and looked on the studies. This was closer to home and plus I could get in touch with Mike and he can spell everything out for him and I appreciate him there. So not only will we be able to throw more tournaments, especially with softball, because they go all night, they don't stop at, at ten o'clock. I mean, it's a one, two o'clock thing, unfortunately. And, uh, so we do that, but also, you know, the kids are critical of it. When you add up all the sports, I was sitting around today and I just figured out how many kids we have playing this sport, playing this sport and everything else. Figuring out a family of two point five, we basically over a year, we have over a hundred thousand people that visit that room from Greatwood. You know, coming out there and everything. So every dollar just doesn't bring it in to help all these outside teams and also help the economy, but it helps every kid in Greatwood. That, that is one of the points. So, uh, I also, uh, Arkansas Valley donated five hundred dollars for the project. They hadn't completely said no on helping us put them in, which will save us another six thousand if they do that. So that's where, where we are, y'all have all the information in the phases, we're getting all that and the total price and everything.
A question, how many tournaments would you think that's going to generate beyond what you currently did?
It will, it will give us a total of six or four more additional.
So you're, you're saying six total tournaments?
Six total tournaments.
The lighting would generate that much more interest?
Right. The problem that we have is on those, on those fields, those lights are sold and everything, we have to spread it out and reduce the number of teams we're going to let in or we can't get them here.
Okay. Just so you know, the hundred dollars per player is for the tournament, not for individual games they play within the tournament because of redundancies.
No, the hundred dollars, the hundred dollars per person are on the team is what they average that person to go out and spend on ta, in town.
Not a lot of people are going to be spending it one in the morning, but my point is...
Well, they, they get there at eight o'clock in the morning, they're there all day, they go find air conditioning.
You count how many kids are going to be in the tournament for the day and you multiply it by a hundred dollars for that player. They're going to play multiple games, but that's factored in that one hundred dollars per player per tournament, which I understand, I just wanted to make you...
No, what, what I'm saying, if you have twenty, if you have twenty teams and you got ten kids on, on the team, that's two hundred, times a hundred is one thousand. That is what they're saying that leaves my heart and comes into town and spends in town.
I don't understand it, you said it right. It's not per game they play, it's per tournament.
Correct.
That's what I'm trying to say.
Yes.
I'll factor that in to see what the recovery, you know, the return on your investment would be for these lights, to be able to share with them at the budget review.
Right.
I like to know secret on spending a hundred dollars at a tournament, because I go over weekend and I show you, I spend a lot more hundred dollars spending.
Yeah. You get paid a lot more.
My wife gets paid a lot more.
If we can add four more tournaments, let's use the twenty thousand, the eighty thousand dollars.
We just wanted to tell us.
Additional, uh, action. Question number, what's y'all saying? And it was twenty...
I, I just faced off twenty teams.
Per phase, three phases, correct?
Four. Four phases. Now, yeah, range, perfect. Thirty to thirty-six. Per phase? Per phase, I, I don't have that pegged with me, I'm sorry.
Twenty-nine, twenty-eight, thirty-eight, twenty-nine.
Yeah. Four plates being added. Uh, I...
Wasn't there a fifty thousand, Tom, that we talked about, you know, somewhere in the fifty thousand halfway past?
Obviously whole four plates. And I would have to put it at sixty, what?
Like, if we could do this in two pieces, it was like fifty thousand was the first phase, I think, some, some, the job.
Just south of sixty for phase one and two added together.
Sixty?
Yeah. It's about six, sixty each, if you were going to lump them in two phases together.
And that was infield and outfield of the four plates?
Correct.
That's take one.
Are you going to say infield, two was outfield? Yeah. Because these are the major ones, he was wanting to do first. Yes, sir, that would, that would take care of the, two of the softball fields right there as well as the, uh, another, it's grass infield, but the little ones play softball on there.
But you want to have this in more depth discussion Thursday, correct?
So you can see where we are about the budget. I think that was what was communicated to me when I said later, said council meeting is going to be before the budget session. So I thought we were just hitting his pitch and then you were going to look at where you are. I will ask a question now, just for, for purposes of further discussion with the council. Um, these are going to be done over what period of time if they were to give them the go-ahead to do it? How long would it take to replace and install all of this?
He would order it and it'd be about, I think he said forty-five days.
For all four phases?
Uh, and to do them all at once is what you're asking? Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I thought you, uh, it'd probably be sixty days for that. It won't take you too long to put them all up, you just have to order again. And I can have that exact.
So you're not buying in time by leaving them out in the phases?
Well, I mean, the only thing you would gain with phases is that you could defer some of the cost to next year's budget, so you could do. But you may be deferred into a cost increase for next year as well.
I think he's just looking for a year, amazing, get some order and build it, I don't think it's a matter of time, it's just a matter of yes or no.
Well, I think we're... You want, you want to get it done before the rain hits again. You know, that's a problem we have with the old lights, is where the position, by the time we could, could get back there, they're, you know, season's over. We replaced all of them last, uh, last year's year before, turn them on, half of them don't work. So where are we at the tournament season, how many are the tournaments? Right now, the tournaments as far as are done for the next couple of months and then they'll start doing fall tournaments, starting in September, October.
I think, yeah, Tom made a good point that, you know, we're really going to wait till Thursday.
Right.
This is, you know, kind of beforehand, but I mean, I, uh, I think it's, you know, a good idea, you know, I, I think, you know, driving down, you know, the seventy-one and seeing those lights on, you know, I think it's just a great, you know, advertisement, you know, and for the city and seeing that, uh, you know, that going on, you know, I mean, for my house, I can always see the, the ball fields, you know, the, the high school and stuff, you know, going on, you know, that's just, uh, don't, they're being used, somebody's, you know, there's something going on down there. I think it's a, I think it's a good idea. And I think we should still let Tom give us, you know, where we're standing and everything.
Right. I just want to come and give you as much information as I could and everything before y'all make a decision. I appreciate just the consideration.
I know, it's not a voting, even my Thursday, just...
I think we kind of kicked it around the other day, or that, that last month, if we decide Thursday, that's what, that we're good, we can call the, if we need to.
So that way, if we do, then you can order your lights.
I mean, personally, I'd like to pay for the entire thing and get it all done in one project, but...
That's what I was trying to go with the...
The monkey's on your rest cell, which whether we got the money.
If you were doing it in phases one right after another, you're not buying anything except sixty minutes, so...
The only way you're going to phase it is if it's going to the next year's budget.
And we will be buying from somebody in Greenwood too, so we'll be outsourced.
Any other questions? I, I'd like to suggest too, on with this consideration is that what's the center that we went to? You, you said, I can't remember the name, but it's also to watch basketball recently.
Oh, the Titan Center?
Yeah, I wanted to weigh in, consider building a Titan Center for about a hundred and fifty dollars too. I'm not being sarcastic because I'm all for these lights and what an amazing facility that is.
Yeah, it's, it's brilliant.
It's impressive, yeah. Tom?
Very impressive.
Sorry, Peter, this guy. Uh, did you have an answer to this while we're sitting in the voting meeting?
Do I have an answer to, what, did you do this or not?
Yeah, I mean, do you?
You can always make the decision to do it, I just have to come up with that fund from where we are against the budget. Now, I know there's projects that are going to be carried over, so the funds will be available now. But when, it'll all, the whole picture will come available once I show you Thursday.
We'll have a full Thursday surprise.
Which notice to call, call meeting drought?
Yes. No, that, that, drought.
That was voted at the front of the meeting and then decided to call some, we can call the meeting.
Oh, we had the meeting?
Huh?
That's what we're speaking.
Anytime, anytime, we can do this.
I mean, you, you wait two hours.
Well, what I'm, what I'm concerned about and what I want to present to you is, the picture is, the city has a responsibility to use the taxpayer's dollars to the departments that provide services first. That is a nonprofit organization and I just want to make sure that before you give away money that would ultimately be used for the departments, that we fill that responsibility first. That's all I wanted to, I want to point that out. So, I mean, it'd be nice to have that money and just throw it around, but I want to make sure that street's able to do their projects and that the general departments, the animal control, the arts department, they can do their projects. There, there are already on the books that were budgeted to use the money for. There is a thirty-eight percent decrease or decline budgeted for our fund balance. You already saw that in previous, uh, explanations of where we are. But I can tell you, if the pace we're currently on is to carry over a million dollars of that taxpayer dollar into the future year, then you're banking that money now and might as well use it for a worthwhile purpose so that that, that center could benefit from the lights. So I'm kind of advocating it a little bit, one camp, one of the other, because I don't have that total picture yet and I want you to have an informed decision before you just from the heart make a decision instead of...
And we are just not a nonprofit, but we are a service to the city because we supply...
Well, most all nonprofits are service.
Yeah, all of it. But you, but usually the cities, they have a recreation program and all that other stuff.
But you're not remaining, uh, under...
Right, I understand that, I understand.
You're revoting what we do not.
Yeah. Anyway, so just want to tell you all very much, thank you.
Good, thank you. Thanks, Kenny, thank you.
Do what you do.
Hey, can you do a quick thing, sign up?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, I was going to correct myself. Thomas, did you, did you take a note on the grant that I mentioned a little ago, because I probably gave it the wrong title? I'm going to keep looking, we have to see here, just a minute, I have to, I'll change. You have it, I want to make sure it's...
Okay, I'll, I'll give it to you.
Okay, Danielle will have it. I'm sorry, I just want to make sure I got the right title, I went too far. Uh, so, thank you, Kenny, thank you, council. Uh, next on the agenda, I actually, we have a guest here tonight and you want me to bump you up because you want to say, I know how you love my meetings.
It's, it's up to you guys, yeah.
The council here, if I move Jason up, he's here with cars to talk to you a little bit, you move him up every time, is that okay? Yeah.
It's time for Jason to head to the table.
That's right. They ask for you, please. So Jason Fitzgerald, uh, cars, he's here to speak to you at the scene.
Thank you, guys. You know, I joke with the mayor all the time, he often jokes about, we're here till midnight. And I think I have been a part of some of those meetings where he spoke some April polls jokes where he were here till midnight, so I appreciate that you guys love to bump up. Uh, it's that time of year, it's been another year, thank you again for being a provider and, uh, very, very thankful for, for that. We are asking, I don't know if you guys have or whether or not, but four or five percent increase, seventy-two cents per month. Uh, each household bringing you from fourteen thirty-eight to fifteen ten, um, for services. And we, we base that on a number of factors, I think I listed most of them there. A lot of it has to do, we gauge a lot of it too, uh, on C P I, C P I U. And try to really work with, with you guys to understand where we at, where we're at from the budgetary standpoint. So I think, I'm sorry for the camaraderie, we hit the, the nail on the head with our, with, uh, percentage. You know, it's hard to gauge what a year-over-year is going to look like, but this last year was five percent year-over-year. So that's what we're asking for, uh, and just must stay consistent.
When was the last price increase?
This time last year. Who's in Florida?
Is that the contractual date?
It is. What director I budgeted this year for twenty twenty-three at five percent, I didn't tell him that. So he asked me and I said, if I told him at the beginning of the budget, the rate increase was budgeted, that's what we did. So, but we, we hit, we hit together, it was five percent.
We mentioned, uh...
When would they go into thing, into a thing?
It'd be July of one. We built the bridge.
I said, you mentioned, uh, River Valley and Northwest Arkansas, I mean, I guess really, how much was River Valley?
The majority, we rarely utilize anything in Northwest Arkansas unless it's a holiday where the landfill or horse myth, saddle saw shut down. So we do have options to make sure that you guys... So we do have options to make sure that you guys always have the ability to contract with us. And that's, that's why that's in there, I want to be transparent.
I'll make a motion that we approve, right?
Same. Have a motion second to approve.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Raymon?
Yes.
McDaniel?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, sir. And, and he's got the contract, he got his raise, but I didn't want to say, I wasn't going to say it till after, afterwards. But, uh, Cards has been, uh, to quote somebody, they've been very, very good to us. Uh, everything's running smooth. Do we still get some complaints? Absolutely, we would get complaints any time, but, uh, everything's been running real smooth. So, we appreciate the service.
Thanks, Ray. I hope, I hope that, that's a big success tomorrow.
Yeah, yeah.
Great, you guys.
Thank you. Sir. Well, there you go, yeah, yeah, he knows.
According to the paper?
Well, that's, she meant to move that, that's right. So the next item on the agenda is very, very special to me. I'm so excited that there's someone here to speak on it other than myself. I've not really done a lot of, uh, preaching on this or talking about it, but it was my goal nine years ago to do this. And I'm just evidently a horrible procrastinator because it's not come to fruition yet. But I've talked about it many times, I've talked to different mayors about it. In fact, one of the, uh, one of the mayors that I served with at the municipal league, she, um, she's president, or vice president, I'm sorry, the fourth district is named third, and she is very much involved with, with this, uh, youth council. And so I had a gentleman, you know, man and his mother come to my office, uh, last week. I think you can come up, and this is Jackson Witherington. And he spoke very eloquently about this project and I think it's amazing. I'm ready to get started on it, so I asked, invited him to come and speak to the council about it and see, see if we could get your blessing, uh, so I'm going to let you take over.
So I'm proposing a group of mayor's youth council. And what a mayor's youth council basically is, is a organization that will foster, uh, service opportunities for the youth of Greenwood. And with the Learns Act, uh, you're going to see a lot, an increase of, of students needing service opportunities. You know, it requires seven to five hours to graduate. And there's a lot of bigger, bigger towns have this, North Little Rock, Ryan, Jonesboro, they all have one. Come back to model North Little Rock, they have a, it's a solid service base. That's what I'm looking for, is a service-based one. There are just some that are kind of based off of just learning about government, I'm looking for a service-based one. Um, they've really solid leadership model as well. And a lot of, we'll see a lot of smaller communities that are going to happen one. So this would be a very opportunity for Greenwood to kind of, in the way, you want the first one, and establish a community council.
You all got, I believe we got provided, you all with the packets that, uh, Jackson has provided. So any, any questions for this young man?
Jackson, he understands service.
Yes.
He understands leadership. He's out of true fifty-four. He did a large planning of Opitz Point, where his Eagles got the project, so he's probably setting them all over a hundred hours himself right now. But he, he, uh, he understands service to your community because he's been doing it, so... What, what all did you need from us? Did you act, did we need to adopt things?
You, go ahead.
Does you, council?
So I'm asking the board, I'm a city council member, and that's really just to find some more service opportunities so that I can have these. And also, um, there's a hundred-dollar fee to establish five oh one, see through nonprofit council meeting. Mayor's office could...
Looked right, he looked right at you, Tom.
I liked your chat.
He knows how this works. Looked right at you.
I thought he was glaring.
Page five gives you, it's got summary requests there, which is what you just mentioned.
Four also has a...
Yes, yeah. Well, I think since this is part of the, our, I think, goes along with the Learns Act, you know, I, I think, you know, give the kids opportunities to meet that seventy-five hours and, and, you know, uh, we've been a little late from the Boy Scouts and the service projects. I think the city would be a big beneficiary of these seventy-five hours and it would be fragmented to the city to do this.
The reason, does the seventy-five hours have to be like city-related or doing stuff for the city? Or just, just give you all an avenue to just progress?
Uh, I'm not sure about the, if it has to be related to here or not, on, you know, service hours. Perhaps, obviously, the city would be great with it. I got concession standing here, red.
Better more.
Right.
I mean, it could work. You know, and I, I have so many thoughts on this, I know you're going to want to hear my thoughts on this young man, but at the very least, you know, at the very least, that, that gets these, these young people involved in what, what we do a little bit, quite a bit, actually. And I would look forward to, uh, intertwining this council and the youth council a little bit. And, and maybe someday we'd get some, some councilmen out of this, or council ladies, and a decent mayor. Right? I'm looking right at you. So, uh, I, I think that's, I think it's a great opportunity for all, for everybody. Seems like no brand to me.
Are, are you asking for, this is a bylaws need to be established? Is that something that you or whoever?
I, I'm really sorry, right, is this, okay? I'm just trying to get out of work. And you hope you're not proposing a resolution for the hundred dollar... Uh, maybe for the five oh one three C?
I don't think we need a resolution.
Just a motion to...
Well, we can just put it in the slate and then write it. You just have the council approve that...
Prove this, the expenditure.
For the five oh one see through.
Fifty to establish a nonprofit and fifty for the registry of the name. That's the hundred, which is, you know...
I like when he says, I request the mayor's office cover those, because I like that.
He's saying, yeah.
He's got a... See, you're... That's less. We're going to call this...
So we just need a resolution, our, uh, of, of vote stating our, uh, support.
Yep.
Correct.
That's what I think.
I'll leave that one.
Have a motion in two seconds.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Raymon?
Yes.
McDaniel?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Awesome. Thank you, sir, mayor. Just let me know and come back to office and visit, whatever we need to do to get you going. Okay. Thank you. You want to, you want to throw a pen and one of the councils to sign now or do that later?
I'll take it.
Okay, all right.
What, a raise?
Yeah, a little raise.
Uh, we'll pick me there.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, number six, planning building ordinance, uh, am I right? Yeah. Ordinance regulating visiting.
Mayor, council, uh, uh, in the past, uh, six months or so, we've helped that, uh, establishing a fence ordinance for the city of Greenwood, uh, and, uh, this actually started back when Casey was, uh, with the code enforcement. And Hunter and Casey got together and started working on this ordinance. And with that being said, I'd like to invite them to vote, uh, to present this draft to the council and answer any questions that you might have, because they are responsible for it and they've worked very hard to put this ordinance together, so Hunter, if you and Casey would come up here and...
Hi, guys. Casey wants to...
Get your bed.
Hunter, on section three, number nine. That's funny, explain that to you.
Uh, it's basically, the fence can cross utility easements at ninety degrees. And that's something about city utility easements, so...
Top drainage?
No, no, number ten would exclude that, so utility, uh, drainage easements would be excluded.
So the utility easements we use for our franchise fees, and they can cross it at ninety degrees, so you can't run a fence perpendicular? You can't cross into them with a perpendicular fence?
Yeah, I guess that would be situational. I mean, if you're going to run perpendicular, you wouldn't take the crossing. I mean, if you were going to run at a skewed angle. But if, if you're looking at requiring gating across any city utility easement, and that, that excludes the franchise easements, not Sled Arkansas Valley, just the water sewer easements. That is the wish of the planning commission.
Just the water and sewer?
Yeah, only city-owned easements.
So, so in nine, you're excluding franchise fee easements?
Correct.
Because those are already supposed to be sectioned by other, by the franchisees equally.
Supposed to do?
Yeah.
Yeah. And the, the original ordinance that I had written included all easements as one. I didn't exclude any franchises or any of the such, but...
I think we're going to exclude that and we probably cleared out, or understand that we're talking about water sewer easements, not...
Okay.
Not telephone, cable TV, and other things that they came about later in line up.
Hunter, does this address, I mean, what property types does this apply to and that sort of thing?
Uh, residential, commercial, just as a general rule.
Well, from, I mean, what I'm thinking about is, you know, residential with, you know, art buyer fixes for cattle, you know, I mean, you've got some, I don't know what that, across the street, the street park is up over here, but...
Residential.
Agricultural use, um, I mean, my property, Doc's property out here. I mean, there's a lot of property around town where... How do we deal with that?
I haven't thought a whole lot into those areas, because I, I don't really just grab this ordinance pretty quick.
I mean, my, my knee jerk is, is I want to say if it's three acres or more, it doesn't apply, but if it's a five-acre lot in Deerwood, should it apply? I mean, I don't really answer that, but we ought to give that some thought about.
Yeah, I mean, I know there are some horses out in Deerwood, so...
And you deal with that.
Yeah.
You could deal with the variance if somebody came in and agricultural uses for agriculture or livestock or something like that, you might, uh, be able to do it in a variance.
Well, I've got a lot of hatties, I, you know. If you say agricultural use doesn't apply, then so that's a chicken coop in the front yard of Crook and Creek.
Yeah.
You know, well-holded, you know what I mean? So you got to kind of...
Yeah, I like the idea of the variance, just because that puts it in front of the body to make a decision versus just in the planing office, so...
I'd like to see something though, maybe, you know, for agricultural, I, I don't know, pick a number. Three acres or more, five acres or more.
I think I actually took that part of the old...
So we don't have farmer, you know, you're not asking a farmer to come in here and get a variance for his fence, you know? We don't want to do that.
Well, we have an ordinance that regulates what's, how many acres you have to have, able to have any livestock or...
Only livestock, right.
So whatever that number is, it'll be a good place to start.
You're about, you're about to read it? You guys are about to read the animal control, and so it's inside of that?
It's in there.
Does it talk about fencing in that ordinance?
It talks about, uh, how much, how much space you have to have to keep large livestock.
But not nothing about...
Nothing specific on fencing, though.
It talks about types of it, doesn't it?
Casey grabbed you this ordinance that originally, and it did have a section about agricultural fencing in there, and I just kind of threw that to the wayside and I still have this, I think, so I can add it to the section back in.
Let's go back a little bit.
So, variances, could they apply for, somebody wanted to build a nine-foot fence?
Yeah, I think in order to apply variances, I'd have to add a section in here that speaks about the variance process to make a legal, but we can do that.
I know some communities, you know, as they get the garden homes, they get closer and closer and they're kind of hills.
Yeah.
Some fences ten feet, the entire people looking in their window.
Yeah.
But no matter what it is, the building inspector is going to inspect it.
Correct.
So then you get into, is this thing a little more over?
Correct. You get a little bit of oversight.
So you're going to add a variance process to the back?
Can, yes, sir.
So my question is, what has changed? Because we tried this before, this availability and some of the value, our dignity expenses, litigation, yada, yada.
They're not allowed, nobody likes it when we add new regulations, but I think this is something that's beneficial to the city just so that we can control our drainage easements, I mean, it's half dozen one way, half dozen the other.
I, I agree with you a hundred percent on the drainage easements, I just, and I, and I, I'll be honest with you, I don't care about the litigation part. If your fence looks bad, you need to fix it, I mean, but I'm just worried about, I mean, I would just refer to what, where, where, where before this, trying to do this, if we cut a shallow way.
I wasn't present when we tried this before, so...
We got into this years ago about fences are absolutely bull, and we got shot full of holes pretty bad.
That, I, I can take that out of here and it's not going to make a difference. It's in state building code, we've already adopted, so that, that's covered and that's getting implemented as we speak.
Well, let me ask you this, instead of having an ordinance about fences in general, what if the ordinance is about fences and easements? I mean, that's where we started.
That's right.
I mean, we started with your fences and our easements, so why not, but filter this all down to what they're on an easement?
You can't... You could, uh, I, I think there's a lot of other beneficial aspects to these regulations than just the easement section. The easement is what caused us the issue, but there's some other eyesores around town that I think could be correct, such as the fences in the front yards, being only four foot tall and not eight foot, that directly busts the road, and that starts getting into side triangles and all sorts of fun stuff. But there's several places around town when you pull out at an intersection, you can't see, and you've got mills out in the road. That addresses this.
We also have fences that are made out of packing crates and, uh, street signs, you can apply this to... This will slowly get... So let me, so wrapping my head around whatever it is. So I could put a four-foot fence in my front yard without asking for the kind of variance.
Correct.
Just buy my building permit, buy my permit. And then I could have an eight-foot fence erected around my backyard on the back where it comes up to my neighbors, I could cross over into the center of that Cox electric easement and not have to gate the ends. But if on my side yard, close to the street, I was going to cross a sewer easement, I could do it, but I need to gate, put a four-foot gate on both ends, right?
Whatever width the easement is, it's inside the gate that requires it. And I also have to set the document, if they have to get notarized inside city hall that explains to them that it should require be gated and they do it at their own risk.
Which we have them, keep them off of the easement, off of the water sewer easement. People could mow it and it turns into a mess.
Yeah.
So if we allow them to come over, they mow and maintain it and kind of, they use it as their yard, we just have to make sure that the sewer and water department have access to that.
Correct.
The width of whatever that easement is, or whatever they recovered it.
Correct.
I want to go back a minute for that, that discussion that we had last month a little bit about forest hills, for example. Uh, maybe the same thing up here at Maple Ridge. Where we required the developer to put this drainage way. And that was kind of it. We, you need to put those drainage tips there. And then everybody built fences here in number, and it all drew up, we can't do anything with it.
Over it to it on top of it?
When we do that, on a, in our subdivision regulations, when we, somebody comes in here, everybody's going to go there, you know, with a subdivision, you know, and if we require a drainage way like... everybody's going to go there, you know, with a subdivision, you know, and if we require a drainage way like that, I think that we ought to require the drainage way fenced off, I mean, in, in such a way that we can maintain this thing going forward. Because once these people move in and the, you know, you get the turnover in the houses, they sell, buy them, you know, ten years later, whoever lives there doesn't know anything about the drainage easement and how it got there, what means or, you know, that's why I bought the house and my fence was there and now you bad people are telling me to move my fence, you know?
If you're outside of the property owners association, when that thing deteriorates, who's responsible for this?
Yeah.
I think that's where this covers that, because I can regulate it on an individual basis versus an overall, and that's a great idea, but.
Well, I think even if the, you know, if the city puts some sort of a, I don't know, I mean, we require, you're, you're gonna have to gate this easement off in some way that not a wooden, I would answer, you know, something that's gonna last for a while without being too onerous to the builder, you know, that says, build me a steel pipe fence or something crazy, you know? But I think we ought to think about that on our regulations, to keep that from ever happening.
We're paying over days' worth when we, when a developer puts in a subdivision, either commercial or residential, we don't want it to be covered up. There's a couple of owners transfer, you know, swap out, you know, swap houses, you know, we're on the third, they don't even know what that is.
Yeah.
Maybe on the, uh, before, before a neighbor is allowed to move forward at every fifty feet, require the developer to stake, but this is a drainage driveway and it's not to be fenced in, but.
Or maybe think outside the box about it, I mean, think about camouflaging it as a walking trail, you know?
It's kind of a day, a day time.
Yeah.
They put a trail next to it all the time.
We're gonna throw this walking trail, I mean, I was gonna ask, do you have these kind of situations out there, buddy, at East Village?
Uh, because our, the back fence, all utilities are in the front, and the drainage goes to the front.
So you don't have one where the drainage will run between the lines or?
One, one problem that you do have, you, you fence off that, that drainage ditch, when people mow their yard, they rake their leaves, they walk to the back, they dump it over in that drainage ditch and it clogs up. And there's, I mean, there's dishes on the north side of, of Greenwood that are grown up and they have terrible drainage. There's mass concrete ditch, there's full of leaves and trees and everything else.
If we could come up with some way of doing these drainage ways, but you didn't fence them, that'd even be better in my mind, but.
Yeah, I mean, I, I covered that on Tim, I mean, if you can't fence across the drainage easement.
Well, but I'm saying, you know, if there's a, like forest hills, if that would have been a walking path, a sidewalk up the side of that concrete ditch, you couldn't have put a fence on it, you know, the thing that would never, we don't have to mow it, you can't put a fence on it, there theoretically, there's no maintenance to the thing for a long time, you could put your fence right up to this concrete. And you have to have a sidewalk on both sides of it, which would not be ridiculous, I don't know.
Yeah, I think that's kind of the plan moving forward with the process today, is trying to mitigate a lot of this on the ground and not have to deal with the, what we're dealing with currently, but trying to deal with what we have currently is the problem.
Yeah.
I think the true testament will be East Village, that'll be our newest subdivision that goes in, see how it goes. Put a lot of work into that in front of you.
It's one thing, yeah, going perpendicular, but I mean, like you said, though, if you have a fence that runs parallel out to it, like, like Buddy said, it would just go their, uh, their cuttings, you know, over the side, you know, and that, it, it piles up, builds up over time. I didn't really police that too much.
You can't, you can't use a whole lot.
And that even happens in a park, you know, Casey, those guys know, they, they have parks that have surrounded, I think, or doesn't, they'll do the same thing. It's not a drainage issue, but it's a maintenance issue.
Hey, Daniel has the correct answer, whenever you have a subdivision coming in, you plan that then and not now.
Correct.
So, but it is still just a matter of having access to maintain the drainage easements. And that's kind of where this came up, was in Maple Ridge, we have absolutely no access to drainage easement that is deteriorating some residents' backyard. Uh, so we're trying to come up with some sort of resolution to where going forward, we do have access to where our street lights can get in there. Try to clear out some vegetation that's grown up over the years, we've probably got one of the worst situations in Maple Ridge right now, where we've already got permission to go through a rental property, which is somebody's yard, to get two set, it's a railroad, railroad tile wall, that I guess was put up by the developer or somebody before this homeowner there.
It was about the lady.
It's collapsed, it's, it's a mess, and, you know, I've, we've gone up and looked at it two, three times, so they, these guys have been charged, not just by me, but by themselves, to try to figure something out, Buddy knows this, we, we've used East Village as a, I, I preach this every day, all day long, almost, that that subdivision, she'll be a testament to all of us that are sitting here, so, you know, ten years, that you don't have to go back in there and try to figure out how to get into the easements, because you've done the right thing, it's built correctly, so, I'm not trying to fix those.
I think I asked, issues, like you're saying, it, it's a matter of truly access over there and this stuff, you know? I was just wondering along the form, which I, I like the form, is there a, uh, do they have to present, get, present this form to the city, like, you know, so many days in advance where they build the fence or whatever, you know, so do you have an idea, notices, or they, or they just?
This gating and utility easements?
Yeah, but.
That would be conjunction with building permit, so they would have to come in and get permitted, based on the findings on that permit. Well, I mean, I will pull up the property flat and see where they're gonna go fence, they should provide me a site plan that shows as well easements. If they are going to propose to gate over easement, that's what I will provide in this form, we've got notaries in house, Charlotte and Daniel both have notaries. So we're gonna utilize them to just kind of nail the fact that you can't do it, or if you're going to, it's at your own risk.
So this goes in conjunction with getting a building permit?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So existing eyesores, commune with this, grandfathered in, what's the story there?
I think they would not be very happy if I did it grandfathered in, but any, I think, I don't know if I discussed this in here or not, but my plan was to, anything over twenty-five feet repairs would require to be brought up to these standards, so I can't, I don't know that I will regulate the entire fence, but anything over twenty-five feet, but then, I mean, I don't let people replace the pickage, but, you know, that seems.
And that includes anything that's a safety hazard, like the line of sight?
Correct.
The only, the only thing that I ever see that would matter, that has anything to do with this, would be just on the golf course, it is those houses that line the golf course, so their backyard fence is all or middle or whatever, and I, and I, they can't, it's not any way to see them on the road. And I really don't care that they're down, if I'm golfing, just like I'm going to hit a ball and hit your house, but I'm just wondering if.
Keep that on the record.
I was just wondering if that, if you're going around looking for that situation, or if, if it just made it front, out, line of sight, you know, from the road or?
I, I think, I'm not gonna be rushing to drive around looking for fences in disrepair, I mean, that might be something code enforcement would, would look at. Uh, I'm hoping to get in contact with all the contractors that are installing and try to get them to come to me up front, uh, and while I'm driving around, I see a bunch of homeowners replacing the fence all the time, I saw them, let them know, hey, you need permit now. I see.
Well, and two, it might be, so fixing, fixing what's in the future is what we're attempting to do here immediately.
We're fixing past mistakes.
We're fixing past mistakes, might, like, city might come up a little bit more, but two, if, and I know Tim will talk about this as one in an apartment, you know, there's, they have their issue with expansive being on utility easements or water sewer, but, and I don't know if it's in here, if we can, we can do this, but if somebody that's had a fence up for forty years and it's, all of a sudden, they've got to address a water issue over there, then we ought to be able to say, okay, now you have to put a gate up, because we can, I mean, is that, can that be part of this, or is it already part of the, of the, the, the rest?
So you're saying, um, we gotta go through a minimum line of, or section of fence down? I can just reduce the minimum footage to twenty-five to fifteen, and that's your standard easement?
Yeah.
And that would then require that be gated?
That's what I'd like to see too, because as, as they and everybody else, whoever is or drinking, declared war on drainage a few years ago, it's hard to have war on drainage if you can't get in there to do anything with it.
Standard easement's twenty feet now, we did have, if you're going, if you're going off of that, you kind of might want to keep that in mind. And bear in mind, easement needs to have access to that nation, uh, and defensive, lost access.
What's the city stance on if we have to go in, tear some fencing down, or do we have a deal about, you know how we have the five hundred dollar sewer backup deal, is that something that's involved in this, or is that something we can't do or?
I think it's incumbent on the resident, and it's.
Well, apparently, as we don't hear things, we just replace the fence, we take that, just try and leave it like we found it.
And we did that, or you guys did that over at Westwood, I guess, or in that area, but is that right?
We've had several, we've had several, one was in Creekwood, uh, not very long ago, they had a building and a fence, so just right there, but it doesn't, fence doesn't have to be over to cause you a problem, because the footprint of the back hole.
Well, I mean, here's another issue in conjunction with that, we have emerged from a old garage several months ago that we repaired, and that entire easement's encumbered by multiple fences. And in that, we were lucky that the problem stopped prior to a storm shelter that someone had built directly on top of our sewer line. So that's just another issue that people are trying to remove.
A storm shelter?
Yeah.
Should allow any permanent structures back to that water shank, it calls out no permanent structures or portable buildings, or signs and footings are to be placed over organic water sewer easements, and then it calls, for when they're crossing, it calls for sixteen foot gate, because using even number eight and eight, you know, as building materials, as opposed, you know, it's kind of how they come and so on. Personally, I would not want any, uh, fence over any water line of the future, they're gonna be in the front, I mean, you wouldn't fence a sidewalk, I mean, I wouldn't fence a water line that would go up, it's gonna be right next to the sidewalk, but most likely, that's not gonna happen in, in the future, I don't think, because we're putting everything up front. But there are some existing, they go through the wild, beyond their new backyards, you know, and that's already happened some. Anyway, I wouldn't know something, sorry.
No, you're not, we talked about it in the first one. So, we, we have ordinance in the book, or is it in this, that addresses permanent structures onward or?
Our understanding just calls out for, addresses fences, it allows them, but it allows them because they were already existing, and allows, but they have to have certain conditions, they have to be centered, and they have to be sixteen foot, so that you can get a backhoe, that's kind of minimum, that you can get a backhoe in there and you could dig, and that's where it's crossing, crossing the water sewer line, you know, if it's, if it's paralleling, then you can still, um, you know, you could have some issues, you know, well, I mean, we've got water lines as close to fences, and you end up taking the fence up, it's not the end of the world, the problem is people have pets, have those fences, and, and then you've got emergency, you've got a, could be a large segment of the community out of water while you're trying to, potentially out of water while you're trying to fix this leak, it's, it's, it's challenging.
Our zoning ordinance also covers, uh, structures over easements.
We just had one split through the cracks, I guess, on this deal, I know it's probably been there for a while, the one you're talking about, oral order with the storm shelter on?
There's a bunch of them. I don't know, portable buildings?
Yeah, I'm gonna be everybody back.
Well, portable buildings is something different than a, it's, a, a concrete footing slab that's on water.
We've got them all, but it's still challenging, but a portable building's forged, stuff that's challenging, you'd have to move it.
Well, actually, last year, we did a rehab project in Hill, we paid our pocket to move, I think, at least two stories built around, we even got more for, for new construction out there.
I just, it's frustrating that we, that stuff gets built, a slab built on a water easement, and I know this was way before your time, but we've had folks in the past that cracked down on little building, get built for some reason, and then all of a sudden, we turn a blind eye to somebody that they're doing a egregious, if you will, wrong foul against the ordinance.
We often don't know about it, right, and just, move my shadow like a concrete pad, and a building over all of our water line, and there's over a leak there.
We should, are you responsible for putting a bag?
When the thing began, when. Those are buildings.
Repressed, I think.
If you have a bad water break, you're, you're building a building.
Made it stop, yeah.
Well, I, so we're gonna motion to put this ordinance on to the first reading with the, I guess, changes we've talked about, additions, variants and such. By title, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
The motion's second. Pertray and title.
In order to govern any construction, Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Raker?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Wrangler?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
In order to govern any construction, I'm gonna say bring our.
I could get a backup just one minute, so, Hunter, in your definitions, whichever one you know what's involved in.
Go ahead.
Where it just says easements, I wish I could find, you have about three different types of easements, I wish you'd define all three of them in there.
Correct.
So you got water, water sewer easements, and then just general franchise easements.
Franchise easements.
And then you've got drainage easements, and you had some pedestrian easements for, uh, I saw it referenced in here somewhere, for sidewalks in the future, access, pedestrian access. for sidewalks in the future, access, pedestrian access. Maybe if you define all three of that, all four of those, so when we hit, when people are reading, it makes like a thorough, a written draft.
Okay.
Is there?
I guess it'd be, we talked about camouflage on a walking trail around the drainage deal. Do you not think, there's been instances in the past, not necessarily green, but we're children in particular, but anybody, I guess, in a high water running situation, fall off in a drainage ditch, and we've got our walking path right beside it. I mean, what's, I don't know what our liability would be in that situation if we, if we need to put some sort of fixing barrier, pipe railing. It just kind of came in there.
It's valid.
Yes. Maybe we'll discuss that on the second reading, I guess.
Yeah, I think depending on, from attorney, I don't know what our liability is if it comes into our being or not. Certainly, I think depending on where it is and where the, how it looks, or not how it looks, how it functions. So, you know, you try to fence off everything, and I'm all for keeping everybody safe, and if you try to do it everywhere, you can't. You'd almost, we talked about the part one time, we're encouraging people to overlook that, they don't have a fence, you know. But this is today, but there have been children literally caught in those pipes, and I think that's happened once in a while.
The drill goes under the bridge, they're about.
Yeah. Right. In the creek?
Yeah.
When it rains, you can't walk home.
Yeah.
It happens. If you grab fencing, you catch all the debris.
I mean, I'm all for what you're trying to figure something out.
I guess signage would be the best thing in this whole country.
Well, I think it did, making sure, when you look at the design, if with that in mind.
What it is.
You know, just, you know, a couple of weeks ago, there were two people in some community that got swept away, I think, so.
We literally have a trial.
You can't protect everything, but you sure keep it in mind when you're looking at it and say, this is a lot of good idea.
All right, number seven is planning again, ordinance to rezone two twenty-three South Gunther, order one R five, that's first reading.
Mayor Council on Requesting a First Reading Consider Rezoning, parcel located two twenty-three Gunther from R one to R five with purchase of construction of these upscale type duplexes. This area on our comprehensive plan is one of the areas denoted as a R five area. And the planning commission looked at this, looked at the type of structure that they want to build on this property, and they approved forwarding this to the council for their approval. The property has been published and posted, and there have been no negative responses from it.
The house owners?
No, this is owned by Wayland Parker's sister, a widow.
You don't have, sorry.
Go ahead.
I was gonna say the house in the corner that recently was sold by Sean Rupert, the auction of Old Hackett and. It's up behind it, I don't know if that helps or not. You know the gentleman in the corner, as you're going to buy an house, the real sharp curve that has a whole lot of.
Lot of it.
In the yard, it's back in behind him. If that makes sense. There's sheep up there.
It's not in the triangle.
Yeah. It's behind the triangle.
There should be a.
Or. To the south.
Should be a map that's attached to that.
Oh, yeah, Cedar Street's the other. Yeah.
The map shows where it's at.
That's pretty close to your house, Mayor.
It is.
Because you're right there in the corner of Elman.
Right. The old one in West Elman.
I guess no one lives there now, in that house?
There is a structure on, I think, the front corner that. If you look at your map, you can see a structure on one corner of it. I don't know whether they intend on removing that or.
Across from the south?
I believe so.
Yeah, that, I know, I was talking to Mr. Lieber about that, and to his knowledge, they were gonna, somebody was gonna live there, stay in. This is the back part of the property.
It's anyway, I'm, did you look at its property value?
So the rezoning, is it just for the back part, or is it for all of it?
For all of it, for the whole parcel.
Oh, it's for the house too, I see that.
Yeah.
Well, maybe they're gonna take it.
Well, the R five gives more leeway to lot size and things like this. It's not just for.
Blue to blue.
You got, what is, do you remember the gentleman over there?
Oh, really?
He's built, he's laying homes out of cat across. He's well-known builder, but I didn't.
Is it Justin Green?
No.
No.
He was here tonight.
Underwood.
Yeah.
Justin Underwood.
Justin Underwood.
So my zoning, you know, R five, it could be in a heart of the place?
No.
Or would that be something else?
Heartbreak.
R five is the budget?
No, R five is a, will allow duplexes or residential.
Either or?
Yes.
Or a combination?
Yes.
And so you said you're gonna tear down the existing house and then?
No, no, they say, but they haven't gotten that far yet. They're just asking for the rezon of that parcel. And then they will bring in a, a plan to us on what they want to build, and we will look at zoning regulations and make determinations at that point.
Well, I guess it's kind of, there is a detached garage there too. It looks like it's kind of a decent lot, I mean, I know, but these are like two duplexes there on that, or is it just them into one?
Could possibly, like I said, we just have to see what they have planned and see if it'd be part zoning regulation as far as lot size setbacks and things like that.
They have that broken into four lots, proposed four lots. One lot was the house and the detached garage, I think it's three acre or a couple acres or an acre right behind it, split into, I think, two lots. And then another lot right against Old Hackett, to the south of the existing home.
So is the infrastructure there, is sewer there?
No.
Right, right, sewer in my house, right there.
No.
Considered not.
So we're kind of limited in what they can do, because they may, they may only have to do.
They may only have to be able to put water, just kind of.
Where's the nearest sewer to that?
They can, they can get to the sewer.
Yeah.
Where we're building cottages, there was no sewer, and we ran sewer to the cities. And they can, they can do the same thing.
Did you have to come across Old Hackett, or was it?
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
I'm looking on the rezoning legend, or idiots, and I'm trying to figure out what apartment complex falls under on this deal. Because R five and R three seem to run hand in hand. Except for manufactured homes. But I would see apartments, I've got multifamily buildings, I've got townhomes, both are permitted in R five. But I'm all about apartment complexes, because it'll be called on. And I'm just a bottom bug guy, because I can't stand my own property coming in here, so I, it really doesn't matter what comes up. I'm a white picket fence, mobile on kind of guy, that's my vision of green, good luck.
Well, and something like this, again, are we addressing just the, you know, the width of the street too? I mean, you know, that area is kind of, there are older streets, you know, streets, I mean, I like to be considered narrow or whatever. I know they're kind of addressed.
Standard model street.
Standard model street.
Probably bigger than where you're here on every green.
I wonder if it's supposed to be over there.
Yeah.
I'm not sure.
Though.
Yeah, we're all that, I guess.
Well, I didn't know about the easements and rideaways, I don't know if, you know, we're allowed for enough rideaway easements, you know, in this. You know, if somebody was either gonna take over and tear down the house, and like you said, it's a series of duplexes possibly, you know, that we're kind of allowed for, you know, easements to, if we need to expand or, you know, have access or whatever.
We haven't seen a lot split, we haven't seen any conceptual drawing. All we have is the type of structure that they're gonna build on it once they get the approval, they get the approval.
But we do this contingent upon what's there, so that would.
Well, that's what, we do that on every zone. I mean, that, all we're doing is requesting a zoning for this property. Then they, if that approves, and they will come to us with a conceptual drawing of what they want to build there. If the lot sizes are correct, if they, if they want to build two or three duplexes, and we look and see if the size setback, rear yard setback, front yard setback, all that has to fit into our zoning. And if it does, then they can go forward. But if it doesn't, then they ain't built.
Well, but if it doesn't, I would want it to revert back to R, or whatever it is right now.
Why would you want to do that?
Just so that it stays like it is.
Like I said, in our comprehensive plan, that whole area there is, was approved for R five built, which means a residential for our, you know, a single-family resident or a multifamily resident.
So is it, you said that it's gonna be broken down into four lots? Was this?
We don't know yet. They say that we haven't seen a lot split on it. You know, if, if they came to us with a four lot split, and it wasn't big enough to put four duplexes in there, then it would be approved.
Well, I guess what I was just wondering, if, if the lot itself is split into just two, wouldn't that fall into the act of a subdivision, and they are required to, you know, the, yeah, yeah?
No.
Do you sort of things and everything like that?
I think it's two, I think it's six, it's a, correct it into a minor subdivision. Six lots.
I believe so.
So.
Yes.
There's no difference between R three and R five, with the exception, R three restricts manufactured homes. Other than that, they're identical.
R three is supposed to be for multifamily, like the apartment complex on the corner of Coker. And.
I thought all manufactured homes were forbidden.
No. You can't prohibit manufacturer.
I'm just looking at your chart on the back.
R five is supposed to govern and decide that these structures have more residential-like characteristics. It's supposed to be a infill zone in between areas of town that have never had any interest prior. This gives a little bit of leniency on the lot widths and other regulations within the zoning regulations, but still maintaining residential characteristics. So, I mean, it would allow for an apartment, but it would have to match the area in which the multifamily structure was built. Their intention on this, on this project are these duplexes, that's what they came in, that's what they presented to council or to the planning commission. Now, if there's anything.
May Calhoun know there's no sewer there?
Yes. They stayed on this property for some years.
Not the developer.
The developer had owned the property? No, no, the owner of the property wants to sell it to the, any developer.
I guess who was asking, I know the quid was open to the sewer, about that water to the developer.
I didn't know that's what the quid was, except that, she's on that up there. So that's what they both have got, so.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah. So if you want to have a little fun, side of Wayland and now tell the quid was whenever you're there. You should have seen her face.
It's one point, according to the county, there's one point.
This, this area we're talking about, just one point on that.
Unless they're gonna take him.
The house?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can see that back there. I actually called somebody, so I could put a horse up there at the time, and he had shoes.
Well, where the house is sitting is included in what they're all rezoning.
Yes, right.
Whole.
Which I take back what I said, I mean, that Sean may not acknowledge, it sounds like they're probably gonna take the house out, I guess.
I don't know.
If they get.
Like I said, we haven't seen anything except for the zoning request and.
I bet you could build the side between the house and Old Hackett, because that's a pretty good little side, side yard. I make motion that we bring this by title only, first reading?
Second.
The motion's in, and a second to place this on first reading, title only?
Right.
Yes.
In order, I'm trying to go again, I'm just skipping past the first. Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
No.
Rangler?
You.
Mr. Daniel?
Yeah.
Calm?
Yes.
Pass it back to the order. In order to submitting ordinance number twenty-three, I'm trying to construct some rezone certain properties to be agreed with, meaning the official zoning map that's to be.
Thank you. Next up is also Mr. Bell, ordinance to rezone property C two to R five, first reading?
Counsel, this is a corrective ordinance that I'm requesting. I'm requesting first reading, consider rezoning several parcels in the area between Cedar, Goldwood, Burner, from C two to R five. These parcels have been zoned incorrectly as C two, which is commercial, for many years. I was dropped my attention by a property owner that was in the process of selling his property. The bank won't finance property that is zoned commercial, like they would if it was residential. The, again, this area here on our, on our comprehensive plan is designated as an R five area. And we also have other properties in this area that are currently zoned R five. It would make it easier to build or purchase property in this area that's been rezoned. The property, again, has been posted publicly with no negative responses. You have a copy of the map and the parcels that are hashed through there that show those are, right now, zoned commercial. And you can tell they really shouldn't be, because they're not in our commercial corridor of Coker Street or out Highway ten. And so what I'm asking for is to rezone these R five and get the, into the zoning, the proper zoning for.
What is the one that's not hash marked, what classification is it?
The three lots there, those are the ones that are already zoned as an R five.
And where in relation to this is the one we just talked about?
It would be.
Right here? This one?
Yes.
No, the west.
Yes. Right here.
It's a couple of parcels away next to.
So, I mean, they've been from C two since, I guess, whenever, beginning of time.
And the whole, we're half of that, Sean, by the way, all homes.
Yeah, all homes is in there, a lot of rental homes, apartments there. Like I said, back here, I could, I went back as far as I could, and I don't know whenever it was uncommercial, or why they was uncommercial there in the middle of the neighborhood.
Well, I wonder if the government kind of, wherever rent housing, whatever was considered a commercial law.
Not that I know of, yeah. It's, you know, it's not any different than, you know, a HUD home somewhere else. It's just a vomit there of, of, you can see, it goes way on out past the hall homes. This would allow us to correct our zoning map and get this back to where it should be, and also solve the problem of people that are trying to develop it, you know, if they've got an empty lot and they want to build something on it, or if they want to sell a home, like I said, a bank won't finance a home if it's in a commercial zoning.
Now, you mentioned the comprehensive map a while back, I thought we blanked it in this whole area of R five years ago.
We, well, we did, but we didn't rezone everything as an R five. We say that it's available for R five, and then I come to you on a case by case basis and say, you know, it's R one now, but I'd like to have it in R five because of this, or, you know, or whatever. But it remains an R one in most cases, remains an R one until it's changed. In this case, it's a C two, which is completely off the scale, I have no idea of why it's C two. And we can go, you know, I'm just asking you to go ahead and go to R five and then.
But there's not even proposed right now to.
No, no.
Stay building or something?
It's just a corrective ordinance to get it back in line. And like I said, it would solve the problem of the gentleman that I talked to trying to sell his house in any future.
This says you've been submitted an application for rezoning. No reason I don't want it?
Give up.
This says that you've been submitted an application for rezoning. And after a public hearing, filled on that point.
Oh, you're looking at the ordinance?
Yeah.
Well, the application is complete. I'm presenting the application to you. I'm presenting the application to you for the rezoning of the property. And we had a public hearing at the planning commission. And they approved the rezoning and forwarded it to the council for your approval.
And so doing something like this too, I mean, you've had to post it to store signs and say.
Yes.
I mean, do any of, I wonder if any of these areas they question have just a house or old grandma, grandpa, or wife, man, kids?
I'm sure there, I'm sure there is and it won't affect them in the lease. It would, like I said, it will help them if they want to sell. You know, if these, if this older couple passed away.
Right.
And then somebody tried to clear up their, their property, it would be a roadblock.
Right. I'm just, I'm going, I guess, the complete opposite of where I probably should be with all the maps and comprehension stuff. But I don't know why we just don't make them R1 with a house in there.
We, we could, but then you would have an R1, R5, you know, you would have your different zoning there. If we did go along with the R1, see, a lot of these homes are real small.
Yeah.
And so if he did sell it, then if it was an empty lot, and if he did sell it and somebody wanted to build another house on there, the R5 will allow them to work within those parameters. An R1, he wouldn't be able to. So it does make it an easier, easier fix for these people because of the smaller lots and where they're located.
So you couldn't build a R1 house on one of those small lots?
Possibly. You know, we have a minimum lot size of seventy-five foot front and you know some of those lots down there are probably in the sixties.
So, by this rationale, we can determine what you're going to build or what you'll do to our ordinance, but we can't go back in and do something to a fence that's already up or. We've been told before that we can't tell somebody what they can't do on their property. Certainly, I've heard that.
So, you know, we're limited somewhat. You can or you can't. We can't tell them what kind of siding to put on their house. We can't, you know, there are certain parameters that the state has passed in the last four years that has limited our ability to say, we want brick on this house, we want, you know, a third of the house in brick and rest of the siding. We have to shy away from that now. And so in, to answer your question, there are some things that we cannot tell a property owner what to do with this property.
As a city, you can't do that, but as a developer, I can say in my subdivision, we don't want this kind of siding. We have to have this much brick.
Right.
But the city can't say that, but I can. And to answer your other question, in R5, where I built those duplexes, by being in R5, I was able to get smaller lots with less setback and I was able to put my houses in there.
And I guess that's what I thought with the R5, that was the whole idea of the deal was trying to develop, like vacant lots that had been vacant for a long, long time and stuff, you know what I mean?
It is, but it also allows variances on, like I said, on lot size. But, you know, for some, some of these lots, especially in this area here, are empty. They got blown away in nineteen sixty-eight and nobody had built back on them. The property that Buddy bought over there was a case of that, that they were just empty for twenty years, fifty years, I guess.
Sure. But, I guess, are, are homes on these lots though right now? I mean, they're not vacant lots, are they?
Some of them are vacant, some of them have homes on them.
Well, I guess, I wouldn't be opposed to the ones that are vacant to say, okay, there's nobody there to make those R5. But, you know, the ones that are, that have homes on them, I'd say this could be R1.
The ones with the homes on them are the ones that we need to worry about more so because.
Or C2.
They're C2 now and they need to be brought out of C2 to residential. R5 is a better fit for them because of the lot sizes and things like this that, for, for future development in that area. Say if somebody had a house and they wanted to replace it with another home, then the R5 would make it easier to do it on a small lot.
All these people, they, they know that their house is being rezoned?
Well, they know that it's in the process.
Could y'all rezone a house if the property owner didn't want you to?
Oh, yeah.
You can? Rezone my house, I1 or C2?
Yep. I mean, that's, that's like an annexation. You can annex somebody, you know, if you're surrounded, you can annex them without their permission or, you know.
I mean, that's why they did the public notice though, right?
Yeah.
So you could put public notice out in front of my house, rezone it commercial?
Commercial? No. I mean, you, I guess you could, Rod, but it's not going to happen. I mean, that's, that's what we're trying to get away from here, is at some, at some point, somebody rezone that to a C2 because, you know, goes, I knew when all property comes into the city as an R1. And so at some point, and I can't tell you when, I don't know if this is for C10 or today or whenever, somebody went through there and built those properties as commercial and, and it's just a bad zone. We're just trying to clean up our zoning map and, and to make sure that some of these people, like the gentleman that's trying to sell his house, can go ahead and sell his house.
Some of this property we're wanting to zone, it looks like it's owned by Greenwood Housing Authority.
Yes, that's all homes.
I know that. Who controls the Greenwood Housing Authority?
They have a board.
On one foot. The housing authority of the city of Greenwood is what all of this is. I mean, I'm, I'm just making sure that the city of Greenwood is not supposed to be involved in this somewhere. Yeah, I didn't know that you were on the board of housing. There's actually two, there's two, which we don't really understand. Completely the land records. We're learning scores. That's Greenwood Housing. The newer lots, the houses that the city of Greenwood. There's two of those. Which is, I've got a folder that goes back to the sixties, early seventies, and that's what it's really called. The housing authorities of the city of Greenwood. The one twenty-eleven and one twenty-sixteen. I didn't know that was something, I didn't, I was just curious, when I saw city of Greenwood involved in the property of the law, I made a hundred of that.
Well, I knew Miss Can and Stan Oak and.
Brad Can, the manager.
Yeah.
Manager, director.
So.
Yeah, me, Stan Oak.
Correct.
Travis Hawke, Ken, Kevin.
I didn't know that. Yeah.
And so once we go to R5, they can, they can be at a minimum lot width of sixty feet and they can have a zero, they could officially be on a zero lot line.
Could possibly, depending on the, you know, what they bring in.
Hey, Sonny?
Yes.
Just a point of order here. Both this ordinance and this number seven that we just talked about, both talk about amending twenty-two thirteen, which is getting repealed on this other one that was either number two. So somewhere along the way, I want to backtrack to that. So twenty-two thirteen is going to go away here.
Charlotte will get me a, I know that's number, I might make correction.
Like really, it should be C2, you know, I'll make the motion, if you read it by title and for the first reading.
Say. Have a motion to say.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Terry?
No.
Brown?
Yes.
Mr. McHale?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
We have a, in order to submitting ordinance number twenty-two dash, before we even start talking, we need to, then the officials on the map.
Mayor, could I ask if we could go in up before we get into them?
Sure. I'm good, counsel, okay?
Yes.
All right, would you like to leave us off?
Uh, yes, I would. Sorry, I've got engulfed. Sorry, I was trying to make an attorney out of the appearance. So, there was, it was, it became known to me that obviously we needed a new member to the planning commission and this gentleman that we're getting ready to introduce to you, I don't know how he met originally, but I can't remember, it's been a while. And then he called me out on a couple of others on an issue of his house. And anyway, long story short, don't hold it against him, but I like him. And he seemed, and he basically, the first words out of his mouth, Randy's mouth was to me was, I want to get involved, I want to be part of the community. Do not hold it against him, I'm just going to go ahead and get it out and out. He's from California. Hold your applause. But he ensures me he does not necessarily think Californian anymore, right? So I have relatives up there, so I'm, so we do. But Randy, Randy is impressed upon me, I very much need or urge and want to be involved within the city. And I've asked his name onto Sonny, Sonny talked to him and it seemed like a perfect fit to be appointed to the planning commission. So I'll let you take over, Mr. Bell.
Well, again, I talked to Randy and I'm very impressed with him. And the first thing he said was, I don't like anything in California, that's a big reason why I moved to Greenwood, Arkansas. And I said, you're a man. But we needed to fill the space that Tommy left, left, it's such a big, it's huge to fill. But again, when you have a person that steps forward and says, holds up their hand and says, I'd like to serve. It impresses me, so I'm asking for your approval to approve him for the planning commission and, we hope that you would approve. You got any questions for Randy, my dear?
You like your. Bill for builder or real estate agent or lumber seller?
No.
Awesome.
No conflicts of interest.
So where our house manager for thirty-one years? Which we had two customers.
Living, living green, right?
Yes, sir.
I'm taking a motion to exist, Tommy.
Say.
Tom Randy's Tom.
You can call it Tommy. I will, who's second? Who's second? Say.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. McHale?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
There you go. Thank you.
Welcome. Yeah, thank you. As I told you before, congratulations and my condolences. And Casey has made very clear he wants to be involved with all named cities, so.
Okay.
So, we are, I believe, on the handle control, ordinance reviewing, replacing ordinance number twenty-three dash oh four, regulating handle passing system. Has everybody met, Ms. Kala?
Tater.
Not everybody.
So, AKA Tater, Tater.
Tater.
If you're familiar with Yellowstone, that is a nickname I gave Kala when she first came on board. So, do you have the shirt on with the train station on the back?
All my shirts have it.
So if you're familiar, just be careful, is all I can say. Now I'm a kind of small package, so.
Amen. And you want me to dye my hair pink?
I kind of did, I kind of did. So, but go ahead.
Okay, good evening, counsel. So, we were just proposing a few minor little changes. The ordinance that we presented several months ago that was, that was passed and was supposed to go into effect this month, there was a few things that was left off of it. As far as encampment fees, we added an extra section for any animals that are picked up that are unvaccinated for the fees to be a higher cost. That way, you know, it's basically ensuring and encouraging owners to get their animals vaccinated, especially for the rabies vaccine, which is a very deadly disease if anybody contracts it. So.
What kind of.
That is on page nineteen and it is under section thirty-seven.
And they're only, he's got twenty dollars each.
Yes, yes, unvaccinated animals will be an additional twenty dollars on top of any animal that's picked up as vaccinated.
Does that cover the calls on vaccination?
No, it does not. That is something that I am going to create a notice upon the time that they pick up their animals, if they're unvaccinated, that they are required by a certain time, just depending on the time of the week. Say if they're picked up on a Monday, I'll give them until Friday to have them vaccinated. And then, you know, of course, if they're picked up again and they cannot comply, the fees go up with every encampment that they get.
They took it up and it's unvaccinated, how are you going to make sure that they do that?
Just follow up with them. Well, yeah, a lot of people, you know, that I spoke with, they will either email me or the vet contacting themselves and let me know, hey, this person has brought this animal in, they've been vaccinated. I haven't had very many issues with that yet so far. And then the other section that just needed a small correction on it was section twenty-eight. And I apologize, this is something that I overlooked when I worked on some changes on this a few months ago. Per state statute, any animals that are adopted from the shelter, they are required to be sterilized at twelve weeks of age. The previous ordinance stated between six and eight months old. So it just needs to be changed to twelve weeks per state statute.
And it says between twelve weeks and three months, is that what you want to say?
Yes, I mean, three months is technically twelve weeks, yeah. Four weeks in a month.
Earlier in that sentence, it says six months also. That we're responsible for their occupation of six months. The first sentence of that paragraph you told me.
Yes, I do see that as well. So that, that would need a minor correction too.
Do you need that to say the same?
Huh?
Need that to say the same?
Yes, the same as the, the very following sentence.
Twelve weeks and three months?
Yes.
Well, I think, kind of like what Ken is saying, I like that twelve weeks and then put a, I guess, in parentheses, three months. Because sometimes, I don't, somebody could read that, I think it's a twelve weeks plus, I have twelve plus three months.
I have to read that.
Yeah. That way I won't wait for you.
Right.
Or just say one of the other, just say twelve weeks and get rid of the three months.
Okay.
Either way, that first sentence, that needs to say twelve.
Yes, yes, it does.
That needs to say twelve weeks instead of six months.
Yes.
So this would make the other.
You would strike, please, just strike.
You can strike three months. You okay with that?
Yes.
It would be between, say, more than the animals at twelve weeks of age.
At least twelve weeks is a between, that would be, I'll try to get the sentence to a bigger level, somewhat clearer.
Yes, it is required by twelve weeks of age.
Okay. So you get rid of the twenty.
Over the age of twelve weeks was set up higher, I think that makes a lot.
Yes, so that would need correction.
Over the age of twelve weeks.
What's the emergency?
We're past it, right? We just have to choose.
Yeah, that way we can make the changes and get this, this ordinance in effect. That way we can also work on the.
Good, my man.
Yes.
She has a tough job. As so, as did Casey, whoever else was going to. And without something in place, it's tough for her to just do this stuff.
At this current time, we have multiple animals in our shelter that they are unadoptable due to their aggression. At, at this current time, we have multiple animals in our shelter that they are unadoptable due to their aggression.
Is this talking about how long we're going to keep these animals? Oh, right here, section twenty-nine.
This, we passed this last one?
Yes.
Yes.
I'll make, if you have questions, go ahead and say them. And she just backed us in clerical issues, what we're going to back to.
Pretty much.
Well, the fees, yes, and the fees, that, that entire column was blanked.
We sit down with our attorney to, here to discuss this and make sure what we're all saying.
The emergency passage, just because of all the books we've been given. Since we're amending this, basically, I guess, if they're guilty of three readings, we don't need to go all after these different pages.
So, just so I remember, the ordinance that we passed said that any animal that stays over thirty days or was aggressive and felt like could not be especially adopted, we're going to use tonight.
I don't recall anything being included regarding aggression.
It doesn't say.
But, I, that does also fall under. Yes. And about ninety-five percent of the dogs that we have up there have been there for more than thirty days.
We got one that's been there three hundred days for the rebuild we got.
Yes, and I'm, I believe that dog has been here since before I even took this over in the number, as well as for puppies.
You know, there were firing squads back in the day. One person that had a blank, or one, one that had live bullets, so you wouldn't really know who did the shooting. I am available, you can, trust me. I'm just spitfire.
And I calculated today, looking at that invoice from today, based on today's date, you go back to the intake dates. It was thirty-six or thirty-nine thousand dollars at fifteen dollars a day, which I don't know what those fees are, I think it's fifteen dollars. At fifteen dollars a day, it's like thirty-nine thousand dollars just for the dogs currently in the lockup.
Taxpayer's dollar.
That's a big number.
We, we, we all are fully aware of the costs. And so what, what you have before you will empower it, if you will, if that's the right word, I don't know if it's the right word. To, to get, to start getting some things under control.
On that vicious, uh, what did you call it on that? Aggressive?
Aggressive.
Yes, the aggressive dogs we have in the shelter.
Is that all in this thing, or is there a whole nother thing about aggressive animals?
Uh, there is a section on deeming animals aggressive or or dangerous, but that's, you know, animals that.
There's not, I can hold another ordinance that talks about vicious animals, right?
I mean, there's a section in here that does speak of it, you know, that's if I pick up an animal that bites or attacks a child or another animal, you know, there's.
I mean, so I got bit by a dog one time, and we redid the whole vicious animal thing and had that hold compensation.
They tried to bail.
Yeah, we had to add to that in the last, um.
It's incorporated in this though as well.
Yes, and it was actually incomplete, and that was something I had to work on during the last.
Can you complete?
Yes.
Section twenty-six. Number twenty-six. Now, this, this is all encompassing, and again, there's, there's been many. You for sure, Casey, Danielle, I don't know if I ever worked on this.
Jared.
Jared, back in the day, if you will.
What's your section here, twenty-six?
Twenty-six is your vicious animal. I make a motion, we adopt this, Marv Green.
Second it.
They're all Marv Green, but how long?
Not only. With amendments. As, as.
I have one question though.
Sure, where you go.
Should we, uh, in that section twenty-six, say that these animals declared vicious, dangerous, are not subject to adoption?
The, when I.
They're not subject to the thirty-day clause.
Yeah, when I revised section twenty-six, um, prior readings, when it was first presented uh, back in March, April, I actually included in there that anything that's deemed dangerous or vicious is no longer allowed in the city limits of Greenwood. And anybody, any owner of a dog that is deemed vicious or dangerous has to either comply by, um, doing a owner transfer to somebody outside the city limits of Greenwood, or it is at the animal control officer's discretion to have the animal euthanized.
I see that, right?
Where's that?
That's, uh, partway down through.
Yeah, it's, it's a ways down on section twenty-six. Believe it's on.
All in animal being classified as dangerous, vicious, unfortunate, and two. It's offered grip and may dispose of animal by means of human.
Because there's room for appeal too.
Yeah, yeah, there will be an appeal process, and ultimately, it will be, uh, if they do want, the owner does want to appeal the dangerous vicious classification, they will basically present their case to the mayor, and it will ultimately be the mayor's decision whether to let the animal stay in the city limits of Greenwood. And either do away with the classification or.
Where is that?
How did you rate it?
Well, what I see, if an animal, if we get to a point where an animal is to be deemed vicious or dangerous, it doesn't need to be in the city, it doesn't need to be around our kids, it doesn't need to be around anybody.
Other pets?
Anyone, anyone, anything.
How incredibly different it was. Such a hard word.
I just think about, what if it was my horses, what if it was my kids, what if it was my other dogs, my other anything? My grandparents, my aunts, my uncles, cousins.
What are your show?
They wouldn't get a chance.
Yes, they don't get, that's why she gets the train station.
Who's second today?
Should we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Raywater?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
An ordinance reviewing replacing ordinance twenty-three dash zero-four and all other ordinances and conflict dealt with, authorizing the regulating, the keeping, and controlled companion domestic animals, creatures in the city of Greenwood, Arkansas.
I make a motion, we waive the second third reading. Second. Motion to waive the second third reading. Any second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Raywater?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Motion, we adopt the ordinance?
Second.
Motion, second to adopt.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Raywater?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Motion, the next verse of the clause?
Second.
I have a motion, second to the next verse of the clause.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Raywater?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, after, and application, I'll put this up tomorrow for the next day.
And then another thirty days. Well, actually, it's immediately not posted.
Okay.
Right. I'm already seeing.
We all.
They're watching.
Thank you.
Ken, a little quick question. You ever received any more problems about that deer?
No, no, I went to training cabin that evening, and I was fully waiting for somebody to call about it. But it's, she just disappeared. Injury that she had, which I'm starting to think it probably wasn't.
It was not.
When, I think about the video that I was shown, there was blood on her shoulders, so I'm thinking somebody shot her.
Or she would have missed one eye.
Yeah, but right behind her, I think there was an exit, and because there was remnants on her back, like something went out the back of her. Uh, I'm not really sure that it was what we're probably all thinking when it comes to deer. I mean, if somebody shot her in the eye, it could have caused some kind of brain damage and caused her to be so disoriented like she was.
Are you going to be here for the rest of the meeting during fixable lead?
I got kids, so I'm fixing them.
Well, let me ask you this while we got you. Have you ever had any dealings with the post office, and they called you to go check on a dog that hit somebody that the river's male?
Who, the post office? Not yet.
Okay. Might study it a little bit.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, number eleven is street resolution to amend budget for street scanning services. So, let me give you a little, before Jeff gets up, or you get up whenever he wants to. Jeff presented this, to, this idea, this, this tool to me, I don't know, a month ago or whatever. And we, we, we discussed already having something in place similar to this. And after hearing Jeff's, was talking about it, I, I absolutely gave him my approval, which I shouldn't have, not because it's necessarily redundant, but it is a little bit, and we'll explain that. But more importantly, because it was over, uh, a limited five thousand dollar unbudgeted spending limit. So I do apologize to the public and to, to the council on that note. I think it was sixty-four hundred-ish, uh, but it seemed like a great thing, a great thing for us to have along with what we already have, so with that being said, uh, I'm gonna let Jeff talk about it a little bit more in depth and what it is, where we are.
Part of that, technically, to the new guy in the state, um, I thought I had some money in this purse that could use for this. I'm wrong, can't move it, so, uh, that's why I'm asking, this is kind of interreres, if you will. We had a contract with street scan, uh, it was a three-year contract that ended this year. Uh, and so, uh, in lieu of continuing to use them, uh, I went with the kind of this located here in Arkansas. Produced, they produced a product that is not contingent on any software. So the other, we were stuck looking at our data, and their software and their software only. Couldn't, couldn't really do anything, but you couldn't put Google Maps or Google or anything like that. Which is what, if you were showing somebody, uh, how the street, or if you wanted to turn it over to a developer, they would have to buy the license for that software to do it. So this makes it more accessible. They did produce booklets, uh, that I presented to the mayor, and it shows, uh, empirical data of where our problems are in the street. Uh, it's also, it gives us some planning where we can decide, hey, we need to hit this number, we have something that we can rely on that says, you're right, you know, let's do that. Uh, but the one-year cost for the previous software for a new scan was a little over twelve thousand dollars. This one was sixty-four hundred. The other thing that this included that would have been extra in the other was we got all of our signs, and our stoplights, and the licenses all in the scan for sixty-four hundred dollars. That would have been additional fee based on the number of items that we had from the other company. Uh, so th- this is a product they also produced, a wall size mask that we can put up also for people to look at. And I can get, you know, make copies if we need to. But I thought it was a better, uh, way to go. I've used this company in past dealings, and so I thought that they had a, a, a good way of presenting it. The mayor liked what he saw from this, it's easier for him to use, and I think it's a better tool for us. So with that, I appreciate you approving my expenditure.
Is this a one-time expense?
Yes, one-time expense, there's no contract on this at all. But the data is ours, and we can, like I said, we can do whatever we want to with it. We've still got the other stuff, and we can still have access to it, it's historical data at this point anyway, because it's three years old. We've got new streets, we've got declining streets since that time. And so this is fresh, and this gives us, not, you know, I know I'm about the third, I guess, street director uh, in as many years, but, uh, this is the tool that, that I'm going to be with, and I think it's a better product.
What happened to the one we spent thirty grand on?
We still have access to it. The data is there, we can still use it.
But we're not.
Well, you know, we, we will for historical purposes, but this is, this is the new improved version of what that would be. If we wouldn't go into another three-year contract for another thirty thousand dollars, roughly twelve thousand dollars a year, which is what you did the first time.
And so when you're saying that, you know, you were proposing an overlay or, or, you come in here with a Google match and shows exactly where it is.
Yes, or on the wall map that I have, or hand out one of these to you, and, you know, you won't get the, will you just paint that road because whoever owns it's on?
I think it'd be worth letting them see that, I should roll that in too.
I'll, I'll pass, I'll pass it.
So, basically, you won't have to do this again?
Not really, no, I mean, not until we, when we start making improvements.
Right.
Uh, when we, when we have those decline enough, when we add it up beyond that street, of course, I think they drove the New East Village, but I don't think we had the names up yet, so. That may be iffy on that one, but we don't, we got out there, uh, those were monitored very closely, and those were held within the standards and guidelines.
Jeff, just out of curiosity, how did, how did the old software or new software compare with one another?
Well, this is, this is not software-based, it's database. It's like I said, you know, I can look at it in this. Now, the other software does produce reports, it had some features that, that are good. Like I said, we can still use those, but, uh, with the fresher data and the lower cost, uh, and not entering in a contract.
Well, both of those software, I mean, both of those had to rank those roads as the A, B, C, D?
Yeah, I think we've pretty much got the, the same, you know, same that we have other roads that have declined since they did their scan, three years ago. And we have new streets that weren't, weren't in this, in their scan.
Tom, how does it look on their budget?
Sixty-four hundred dollars. It's the only reason you're being, you're being presented with it, is because it's over a five thousand dollar limit, and it wasn't budgeted.
Otherwise, I'd be, come to be asking for a twelve thousand dollar three-year contract for each year.
Yeah, and by the way, Jeff and I had to talk about this, and he just recently, today, or assigned a letter of, to begin the process of, I know you do remember, we, we got Denver Street and Main Street both overlaid, uh, with, uh.
State aid, honey, RDOT paid for us to have those streets done. Sent an application to RDOT, they encouraged us to, and of course, we wanted to, but since we hadn't applied this over a year, so more than likely, that would be in our favor that we haven't asked for any overlays. And what we're looking at right now is from East Denver down to Belle, uh, because, a lot of it's because of the school traffic. Uh, and if you've been on those streets, they're, they're all beat up, and you need some work, so. If we get the state to help us with that.
Yes, council, you get one of these?
That's what, I can, I can reach out, once reached out, I'll be likely.
I make a motion, we approve the resolution?
Second.
I have a motion, a second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yeah.
Mr. Raywater?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
No.
Mr. Powell?
Yes, but I have a comment. We, we need to make sure we're spending approved.
I understand that, I, I, it's my mistake, it's the new guy in the state, that I thought, like I said, I had some money over here that I could use, but it was over that day, I couldn't, I couldn't.
And mayor, the five thousand dollars is there for a reason.
I understand. Reason I started with apology, and I do.
Yes, my vote is.
Absolutely. I do apologize. Thank you, counsel, thank you. Uh, number twelve, the Board of Wastewater Commission, discussion regarding resolution to restrict surplus general funds to water wastewater needs. No. I'll, I'll be right by your side.
We presented a list here of projects that are kind of weighing at the top of our, our needs list. Um, obviously, a lot of it has to do with funds, and my understanding is that we relocated some funds from, I'm gonna have to defer to Tom with this, because I was not in the meeting that this happened. Tom, can you explain what we did with the ARPA money?
Well, they know what they, what we did. We, uh, we maneuvered the ARPA money to be able to resolve that ARPA reporting and subsequently freed up excess cash for the general fund, because what was budgeted for police is now being paid for by and through the ARPA. because what was budgeted for police is now being paid for by and through the ARPA funds, several reserve and general fund. By doing that, it moved a budget associated with the police funds over to it, creating a surplus of the, what was the ARPA money, now police budget, is absorbed by the ARPA money and is available now for other spending. So that, that $1.125 million, which is what we're using on the ARPA side for police budget, is for all practical purposes available to the general fund to be used for no restricted purpose right now. But what it did at the last meeting I was at is that you did a resolution to reward and revise the ARPA money restriction that was on there, or the allocated trunks that you had for water sewer, for sewer improvements, water improvements. And you subsequently went with the idea of getting it through so we could get it processed through the, through the police department. So by doing that, it eliminated effectively any kind of guarantee that the water sewer department would have access for infrastructure improvements, because it's now in the general fund as unrestricted funds. It's sitting in your general fund.
So Tom asked me to present a list to you and so you kind of know what we had in mind with this money when it first became available to us. A lot of things are kind of unknown for us. The big factor that's kind of put a red light stop on some of our extra spending and planning is the cost for relocation of sewer and water lines for the bypass. We have some preliminary numbers, but at this point, we're still kind of waiting on the state to let us know how much they will pay and how much we have to pay. But at this point, I know that Tim is estimating somewhere around $700 and.
723 was, so that's what for my engineer, but it's still working off the bid, so it could go higher. And that's if the state agrees that that's our part due, they could disagree with that.
Yeah, actually, the actual amount was, I've got that here.
What's 723, Tim, what's that be?
$723,000, I'm sorry.
I thought maybe I was talking about a footage of what you.
Yeah, I'm sorry, sorry. Originally, the amount for sewer is estimated at 2.6 million. Of that, I'm not sure how much is gonna be on our backs, but we're gonna have to come up with it. On Tim's side, it was originally $915,800. That was the numbers that came from.
This was from Jeremy Shores, correct?
Yeah, I hope that was the other way around though, I thought the bigger number was water, but I can't remember now, but it was submitted.
The state doesn't pay to move these utilities? So what we know is.
You're right, sorry.
Tom and I had a conversation, Jared Wiley, who was the top engineer recently, anyway, doesn't matter. Jared Wiley is an engineer with RDOT. There's still, I don't have a number, I mean, I have a number that Teresa has of what could be. But what the state does is depending on where it lies, if it's in a current right-of-way, they may. I'm just gonna tell you how I understood it, it wasn't all, it was about as clear as mud and I'm not complaining, I'm just saying, I'm not sure you know what to tell me yet. So it depends on where current infrastructure lies within a current right-of-way or a future right-of-way. That's the best way to say it. And depending on where that is, they, they will pay part, but not all. There was a little more to it.
They use it out of the right-of-way?
If, if your water line is in their right-of-way, they follow state law and it's your responsibility to move it. If your water line, and some of ours isn't, and some of the sewer line is, is not in their state right-of-way, then they will pay for the reload cost, that's state law, and that's, that's what they're following. And we've submitted what we think is our responsibility, but the state right-of-way, it kind of goes in different angles. So if they agree to a Jeremy's as for the $723,000 out of that $2.6 million or whatever.
And that's just for the water?
Yeah, it's just for the water. But, but it still has to be bid out, so that number, once it goes to bid, it can be larger.
I think if we put out at a million dollars, we'll probably be lucky.
I would agree with that.
And of course, we're talking years down the road, possibly. Yeah. So whatever they go.
We're not bidding in November.
Not necessarily.
That has to be done before this up to.
Bidlet is November of this year. Now, there is a chance that that bidlet would be next year and the reason for that possibility, according to RDOT, is if not everybody, not us, we, we, the city are playing well with them, if you will. But you've got other utilities out there, Sweptville, Marcell Valley, whoever's out there. They, they as in RDOT, we're not getting a good response, I don't know if they're with me or who we're talking to. They weren't getting the quick response that we were getting. So the reason for a possible delay is if, if that doesn't happen quick enough. If they do, and I've been told since I was given that information, that everybody is not turning a plane there and probably will let bid in November with the ground, somebody doing something in the ground in '25, or '24, sorry, summer, possibly. So, which, which they're not gonna start doing that until utilities are relocated, so.
So I guess the synopsis of that is we've got such an unknown here that we're kind of second here waiting on what we can do. I mean, we've got a lot of things budgeted for this year, but obviously, we've got a lot of things that aren't in the budget and this was one of them. So we've got, we've got that on our minds. We also have completing the Indian Hills sewer rehab, that's estimated from $1 to $1.5 million. That was already on our radar to start out probably in 2024, I don't know where you went. Waste water plant rehab project, again, we need to start that in 2024. And Dalton, excuse me, Dalton estimates that at about $2.5 million. Rehab of the mini mall lift station, cost is kind of unknown, but that's on our long-range plans for 2025. Then we've got the Shadow Lake sewer rebuild, rough cost, we've come up with $3 million. That is, we're working on it right now, seeing what we can do. Water treatment, Greg is in dire need of a new concrete water tank, $750,000, that should be $750,000 a gallon. Estimate is $1.5 million to replace the existing one that we have that's rusted and not efficient and has some issues. That's up at the water plant. Also, he is continuing on the structure of the dam. Right now, he's got engineering review underway and also some repair work going right now. What is that repair work you're thinking?
I called a basement company and we've had leaks on the sidewall ever since we put that stainless steel up for about a third year, for about a third year, right, our market's been up. And I called some of the Texas leak on basements to come and I think they're gonna give you a wind shear Thursday and grow some holes and put foam that is made to react with water and maybe stop this. And no matter what it does, hopefully it slows it down or stops it. Plus, I've got other places that, who had these big floods, has, has got into cracks and got rid of some dirt or anything, I don't have foam in that. Later this year, I've got another, I have $50,000 to work on some of the concrete, but I wanna get all this stuff filled. We put 54 yards of concrete in it, maybe about five, six years ago, the foam's a lot cheaper.
But you don't have, you haven't got a budgetary cost for that?
No, I'm hoping it stays under $10,000, I'll take it out of it.
Do we know what the end of life is on our dam?
They're looking, Jeremy, you know, Jeremy and another engineer that works on those, saying end of 15 years.
It's not very far.
Yeah.
Then for Jim, he also, the relocation of the water on the bypass. We have a five-year and a chimney replacement that we're looking at. And unfortunately, for the guys, a lot of this stuff gets bumped and the relocation for the bypass has really kind of bumped off the things for us, because until we have those. That's all to say that we were counting on that ARPA money to help us with some of these projects before even the bypass came, you know, came up on this. So I just wanted to let you know, we're not planning on just letting this money sit there and our operators not do anything. We've got a lot of plans to forward and that doesn't even touch some rehabs of other areas of the dam.
Right, $10 million?
Yeah, exactly, all of it together. And who knows, on the, you know, again, we're, the Shadow Lake, as we discussed at one of our work sessions, that system, I wish the sewer part especially, is, is at the end of life. So it's probably something that we're, we're working right now with Travis and also part of the municipal league to see what we can do and how to do it and everything, so.
So we'll give you a little bit of numerical history here of where they are budgeting. The sewer and water takes out of the city sales and use tax. Right now, we're looking at the city sales and use tax having over a $4 million balance. They're looking to, if they do all their budgeted items this year, they're looking to pull $2.5 million out and drop it to $1.9 million. My target number is a million on that for contingencies. However, that, one of the things that we factored in there, if you looked at your budget for the water system, water sewer, city sales and use tax, is we actually have earmarked that $972,000 in there. So it would be something that would lessen the impact of them using city sales and use tax dollars. If you use the federal dollars, it's why we targeted it for water sewer improvement, infrastructure improvement. However, now that it's a general fund and it stays in the general fund, it's just unrestricted. If they could use that money for doing the purpose of the reload of the utilities, it would allow them to continue with their operating monies to do the rehabs that they need to do and to progress along that pattern. Otherwise, they're gonna have to do, the unknown's gonna become known and then they're gonna have to decide what's gonna be moved out. And you guys already mentioned when we were talking about the lights at the Boys and Girls Club, the more you push it off, the higher the price gets, well, that's triple that to them. They're, they're a little bit more involved than it is just to put a new light bulb and take out a ballast and do that kind of thing. Their, their costs go significantly up the more you push it off and that's what they're trying to do, they're trying to accomplish it. Dalton's really pushing to get all that, what he's promised, done. And right now, it's financing. So they're, I mean, if I spelled them out like I did Street, over the next few years, you'll see that they're gonna be looking at financing the future. And we talked about ways to do that, either bond or you can do it on a short-term operating note, but I would rather mine it, so.
Oh, I wanna brag on our department heads because they really watch the pennies, they really do. And, you know, they're committed, they're committed to the job and they have, you know, they really try to stay on top of what we need done as far as rehab, but also keep in mind that, you know, we've got a future here too and we've got expansion we need to provide for. I don't think you'll find three department heads that work so well together in any other business I've ever been involved in or around. And they deserve a lot of kudos and they're trying to manage this with a lot, with a, really a small purse. It doesn't look like the small purse to us, but it really is a small purse for all that we have to take care of. And Act 605 really puts all of our heads on the chopping block, folks. It was designed because of what happened in Jackson, Mississippi and everything and, and a lot of rural, especially smaller water departments have, have, are in financial distress. And so the idea of Act 605 is to keep us out of financial distress, but we have to, we've got a lot of accounting coming up. Yes, we're probably gonna have to have some rate increases, the rate setting is going on right now. We have to do that, that's under the Act. But if you will go ahead and appropriate this money to us, I'll guarantee you we stood. I'll answer your questions if anyone can ask.
One thing that, I'm, I'm, kind of layers on the water, waste water mission and I will say that everything that Teresa said, I think they do a nice little job up there and they do mind their piece and, and everything that's listed on this sheet that she has presented, I think vanilla is needed, you know, sooner than later by the city. But one thing I was wanting to pause is, is, if we get upset, it'll be a little bit, but Tom, you're saying that the amount was like 1.1, 1.12 million?
That's for the, for the ARPA.
For the ARPA money that we've only restricted.
The reason it's 1.125 is because 975, 972 were the two tranches, but we only spent $826,000 on the senior center. So the difference between the 972 that you originally resolved to the water department, we're not asking for that. That additional amount that was saved by the purchase of the senior center is still gonna remain in this, in the coffers of the general fund. Some of it went to, some of it went to the, the bridge project.
I thought the balance of that 875 that wasn't spent on the senior citizen center, the balance of that was reserved for upgrade on top of the 500,000 upgrade.
Yeah, we, that was what we were gonna do if it was ARPA money, but we were using the upgrade just for some of the grant, the half million dollar.
What was that leftover, that amount?
1.125, so I'm just giving round numbers, 972 is the round number of what was originally done. I think it was 972.6 something. I have the exact numbers.
What about water?
That's what you, the first tranche that we got from RDOT, you restricted for, on a resolution, you resolved it for water sewer improvements. Now, the problem with that is it couldn't be growth-oriented, so we wouldn't have been able to use it for building the road. It was designed to be used for specifically improvements to infrastructure that you currently have. We tried to do the pipe on the curb, but they said no.
So the 972 is what went back to general fund?
That's what we're asking there.
But we did this other, what we did three.
1.125 million went back to the general fund because we're using that ARPA money, that's the amount, to pay the salaries of the police. So all of that 1.125 million came back to the general fund as unrestricted funds.
Which was part of the, it was all the first tranche and part of the second one.
Right, and the part of the second is it was 975 and you used 826 or whatever for the senior center. So the difference went with, and that's why, that's why you gave a, got a little bit more surplus. They're not asking for more than what you originally authorized them to have.
Okay, so that's where I was trying to get to.
Well, I guess that's what I was gonna look to see too, I think it was 970, but if we didn't have that surplus, party's thinking, well, we're not the bridge, the.
We gave $150,000 to the bridge.
$100,000 to the bridge.
So we, do we need a motion to move 1.125 back to the sewer?
We need the 900, we knew what the first tranche was, 975 was what it was.
972.
972, what we're raising.
I get you exactly.
So from the 9, back to the second tranche, just for a second. The 975, we used a 26 for the senior center, so there's 149 and something, you know, something, around $150,000.
It's a $154,000 difference, I remember that number.
154.
That's the difference, you used 154.
Now.
So my question about that is, is that 150? So my question about that is, is that 150 sitting there available perhaps for lighting?
No, we've spent it up.
That's what we.
That's how I generated the money, that was my creative.
So that's what, now, that's what went to the bridge.
Right, that's how I created it.
So you've got the 972 though sitting on.
That's, that's what I was going to do, Daniel, is that we had some money there for, for Boys Club Life, but now I think it went, went to the bridge, so.
It would come from the 9.
Anything that you would do for the Boys Club would come from carryover projects that are in the general fund that will not be done this year. Follow what I'm saying?
Yeah.
We already know it's probably not going to happen or we're going to have a budget surplus as a result of. That budget surplus could be generated even more so from police, for instance, by attrition people leaving, higher gaps between the time they leave and hired, there's another bigger savings on the actual salary cost. They, they usually in a normal year, they'll budget a dollar that would come in under it. So that generates a surplus. General usually comes in at about 350 to 400,000 dollars surplus to help on our budgets with those departments that are giving the tax, the civil liberties, because remember the planning department, family control parks, police department, the fire department, all come under general. So they're all general funds.
I got a question. You said we're having rates that are done now?
Yes.
Just out of curiosity, how does the commission feel that the rates will address the depreciation you've talked about and the future capital expenditure that we've talked about? How do you feel like the rates base is going to come back, taking those into consideration?
We have not had a rate increase for quite some time, so I think we were already kind of thinking, okay.
Number one, we're unique because we have a 1% permanent sales tax for capital. Most cities don't. So they don't use, the rate study is designed to cover the operations of the water industry. That's what they're paying for. To produce the water, supply the water, that's all costs associated with operating. So they have to, that operations side has to make a profit by staying long. It cannot operate any way. So that's why the rate studies are being done to protect that. But we do have considerations for future debt service because debt service, if we were to go to a bond, is covered by water systems revenues. All of this information is given to, and we had meetings with, with, with Hawkins and Williams, and they're well-versed in exactly what their considerations are to be justifying in five-year period for the rate increase. But we're, we're a little unique because most smaller cities, everything they collect goes towards, you have to be able to do your capital, the depreciation costs, yeah, that's all being factored in, but not significantly to the extent because of that 1%.
So 1.6 or 5, that 1% will be considered with our rate?
The 1% is going to be considered to, to fray some of the capital cost that the water system revenue might be able to.
And they'll factor that in with the study.
We, we were already anticipating that probably we were going to have to have some rate increase, but obviously now it's taken to us.
Well, I, I guess what I hear you're trying to say is that, that potentially, I don't know, 10 billion that we're kind of looking at here as, as things that we need to get done, is somehow can be, some of the cost that the 1% doesn't cover, that look, that was like 10 billion into a rate increase so we can kind of, as we go, without, I don't know, I don't know what the words are.
No, it's just 605 required the rate studies and it's supposed to cover all these different areas. And she mentioned a lot of depreciation issues and a lot of future expenses.
That's all factored into it.
So I was wondering how the commission felt if we were going to get graded on our study, but I wasn't aware of the 1%.
We, we gave them, or you guys gave them, the three and five, they knew the plan. So they know down the road, they're going to do an inflation factor down to what these projects are estimated to be. And what better people to do it than an engineering firm? And so they pretty much know what their additional costs are going to be. I provided them the city sales and use tax and its current growth pattern. They'll project some growth, but probably not as aggressive as the growth actually is. Because what they're going to do is they're going to buffer that out and say, we don't want to tax the tax, the citizens with that right now because we don't need it. They're already paying the 1% for what's capital. However, if you read the city sales and use tax, it does not really restrict it to, we can't take money and supplement the operations in the next. What's been happening specifically to sewer? We, sewer needs some cash flow and that's the only department that I daily cash manage. Before we write checks on the sewer department, we look to see if, are we funding the capital back to sewer and are we in need of an influx of cash to them? So it's really working the other way. It's not where water's going to have, systems revenues are going to have to cover capital because the other. So we've had lengthy discussions and they, they continue to meet with us and decide how do we want to factor that in, but.
One of the things I'm not sure that they can factor is, we've got a lot of old lines. Is that something that you guys were able to give them that we had to do for the last thing?
They're looking at everything in detail with a magnifying glass. They're looking at age and potential, even if we're going to have to add employees, if we're going to have to buy, add equipment, buy a backhoe, age of the infrastructure and water lines, they're looking at every detail. It's a very comprehensive rate study.
Well, it's going to take several months. I will, I will point out one thing that you mentioned about 605 and the heads on the chopping block. You and I had a discussion today, and I was the chair, and that was that they have a responsibility for quality of water. And if we're negligent because we don't do the repairs that are needed or we don't fund what needs to be done, that's negligent and that comes back to them. They could, they could pierce that nail really quick.
And we're calling you for bill money.
Exactly. Exactly. We don't want to see that happen, but, and another thing is that you think about water sewer. Water sewer is the, the department of dreams. In other words, everything, nothing happens, no growth happens until water sewer gets out there. It's like, that's the scene. So there, you're, there, you're pet child of the club that's concerned. And you don't want to overburden the water users because there's a, there's a detrimental side to overcharging for your water for what you're planning on doing three to five years from now because it was tiny growth here. But if you're out facing what the cost of your utilities are in other cities, they're going to probably think, eh, I'm not moving there, it's too expensive. So there's a balance in that that you have to have when you set your water rates. And they know that too.
All right, one more question after we've heard that. So what does the commission view on the city's ability to buy water to customers within its municipal limits? Do we, I mean, 605 kind of talks about that too?
Right. We have some capacity issues that, that, you know, are looming for, for sure. That is something that the department heads keep, you know, keep on their, on the register and, and I know that they've talked about how we can improve where there is. We're, we're putting together a committee to look for other water sources. And we're looking at maybe even having to add to some of our plants and upgrading our plants. That's a big deal right there. I think one thing that is, Tim mentions in his, his reports a lot and said, you know, labor. You know, I don't think I'm probably telling you anything you don't really know either, but labor is an issue for our departments. Those three guys that I talked about, they're very skilled, but two of them, you know, they're, they're going to, they're seeing retirement in their future, really in their future. And as the chair, I'm real worried about who steps in. Fortunately, we've got Dalton and he's, he's, you know, very skilled and handling, but he can handle everything and take, and filter shoes. And Jim's got a lot of need for some, some younger employees in there, right?
Yeah, it's, it's from top to bottom. It's, I, I, employees retiring now, I think, I don't have anyone, well, I just hired someone, but other than that, everybody's 50, all up. My young Scott was 50 years old, I mean, so, you know, future, you know, that's, people retiring now, the future is short. I guess getting qualified crack personality challenge and finding employees and.
Our pie scale is probably not very attractive for that.
But John, the commission has control over that.
To some extent, I think.
Huh?
Ish.
Ish, yeah. Yeah. Council's got to say about a regulation for that.
But that's, that's one thing that we're, we're icing at this point. Oh, I didn't want to get all subplots here. I just wanted to let you know that if you reappropriate this money back to us, that we do have plans for it and it's not sitting there just, you know, to look at or anything. It will go pretty fast because we have.
I don't like the rain, you think you got on the right committee.
Well, given all those concerns, I'd, I'd like to make the resolution that, that we restrict those first tranches, or that dollar amount that Tom says, you know, to the wire rates to our department.
I'll second it.
Motion is safe.
The Brown?
Yes.
Speaker?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Frank Warren?
You.
David?
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Teresa. And I'd like to reiterate what you said about the department heads. I tend to give them a hard time sometimes and they know that, that's because the rate is really low. And they do, do a wonderful job. And I want to thank you personally too. I know you weren't, you were a little reluctant to step into the shoes of the chair, but I appreciate you very much for taking that role and, and being as you are, so. Thank you very much. Moving on, I believe, now to 14, I was skipping 13, okay? Yep, so, third?
That's Amendment 18-04. I apologize for not getting it to the city clerk to take one pass down. Is there a? I'm here, I'm bad. I'm glad that big zero.
I'll try to, I'll try to do something. A little spicery, just may give it up.
So there's.
Was there enough?
Like, Mr. Flutter didn't go, didn't look at mine. I'll argue my votes a little bit.
So, out of all the amendments I was looking at, there's just three. They told me that ABC said the rest of them, that municipally, they said that that just wasn't, I couldn't do it. That, I kind of concur with Pop Hurvis. This is supposed to be kind of hidden, not out and open in court type deal and stuff like that, so. So I settled on the three. If you look, starting with section three, the italicize, the smaller print, that's what it originally says right now. My, my addition would be what's underlined, brewed, column of distilled. And I don't think anybody really had, I don't, I don't think there was a consensus problem there. I think I have consensus to pass that, other than maybe right here. They, down here, maybe they're happy with the way it was and I'm happy with the way it was. If it doesn't pass, it's fine. If you go down to six, to section four, application, application process for the permits, wanted to, I'm trying to placate a certain group that calls me all the time and want to restrict the, the money to sidewalks and trails. And we are falling way behind on that. Mayor has actually mentioned that to me too. People that, that you want to live, I mean, people want to live in these places and we don't do something, we're going to lose, we're going to lose a younger crowd. And we want, we want kids to stay here. On AL, that would be the third amendment and I probably don't quite have consensus on that, but people, some of them would like to leave it alone, but I'd like to change it from 1,000 to 400 feet. And everything else stays the same, it's just that underlined word, 400 feet, and then the number 400.
So Entertainment District Bills partners in it in life?
They said ABC is going to govern that. And they may change from time to time, but really our, our purpose in life is to put it forward and that we could restrict it out if ABC ever wanted it, you know, we could take it out, but we can't quite put that in. Now, if someone else would like to work on that or Mr. Travis would like to get a few opinions, that's fine. I still wouldn't mind it being in. But, so I would ask that we put this on for first reading by title only and I'll ask Mr. Travis to kind of clean it up and, put, clean it up for the second reading. I typed all this up, so I know it's messed up because I'm not a lawyer.
You're such a B there. When you talk about brewed and distilled, isn't that like the homebrew stuff, is that what you're driving at right there?
So brewed with the, these.
Craft beer.
Craft breweries?
Well, it kind of reads to me like brewed, distilled, wines or brewed or distilled. I mean, I maybe got to define what that is. That is beer, craft beers.
I can go in and put that.
You can still whiskey.
I'll go in and put that in definitions, so.
Make a good shot label.
Right, I think again on that, there's probably state language defines that exactly, but you can probably steal it from them. Okay, I'll, I'll go ahead and add it to definitions, so that would be section two. So for second reading, I'll add that to definitions.
I think that's, sometimes I just look at Kathy Cross and, and lots of other places that are doing those craft that are, I guess I was trying to say in-state. I mean, you know, it's, it's not something that.
Homebrew.
Yeah, it's not, you know, Budweiser, whatever, coming, Younghammer, you know, doing, becoming like.
Local brew.
There, yeah, yes.
Can we do a repeal on the price of that, or maybe? I put 1804 in your table.
Do your hand up.
So I'll prepare it, the second reading is a repeal and a replace, put it all in one.
Thank you, Cheeks.
You just want to send it to Jamie after it's dropped in there in the background.
Cheeks goes.
I haven't seen the works yet. I've read a lot of different cities where background checks are required, compliance checks are required by police department. There's a lot of work that goes into requiring a, something of a safety checklist that the police department has to prove, but it's going to create a lot of work for the police department. If we're doing it correctly, I think. And I don't want to see the, the money go straight to sidewalks, especially if it's going to cause more work for our department. There's got to be a way for us to bring in a revenue stream. I, I personally, I talked to the fire chief and I'll probably go to emergency services. If anyone's dealing with the effects of alcohol, it's going to be emergency services for, to respond to the recs, us dealing with compliance checks, the fire chief, doing the checks to approve the buildings and it's just going to be a lot more work that's involved with us if we're doing it correctly. I haven't seen if this has anything in, I haven't seen it, but if it has the things in there, I think it needs to have, such as those compliance checks and background checks on servers and, I can't remember what some of the cities call the checklist, but they go down and make sure they've had the training to serve alcohol, the right people serving it, not underage people serving alcohol, to go through training to make sure they know to recognize false IDs and things like that, so they're not serving underage people. But there's a lot of work that goes into it for a police department. I think that's done properly. And I don't know, let's send that over, since I haven't seen it, I mean.
ABC lists all that out and, and again, I was kind of getting over in some of their territory with some of the other things I was wanting to do and that, ABC addresses all that. I understand what you're saying about the increased workload upon the police, increased workload upon the fire. I understand what you're talking about. I don't necessarily agree with it, but ABC lines out all the background checks and all that, how you advertise, it's all through ABC. How you advertise, it's all through ABC.
I mean, directly, and it's just obviously my opinion, but directly putting into sidewalks, handcuffs, those funds, uh, if it's put into the general, and something came up and it was needed somewhere else, that's one thing. If, if nothing's needed, uh, then obviously request that goes to papers and sidewalk. But I don't see that as a pressing need out of something that's going to cause more work for certain programs.
And again, this is not a huge revenue stream.
Well, this is just the beginning. Uh, I mean, I personally think it's, nobody calls for other people to start requesting it. And from my understanding, the, the country folks are already open to it. It's just going to snowball and, uh, well, we don't really know where it's going to go. But, uh, I think just put it to one specific use, handcuffed matches, just one uses. My point to make is, I just wanted to voice something.
I agree with that. I think you go to the local fund and let the council decide what the funds go.
Thank you.
Well, it's, it's my understanding that even up to satisfy the private club, uh, they have to sell more food and stuff than they do alcohol. And that the food is going to be taxed into a separate thing. It's just going to be the alcohol, of course, it's going to be the business structure, is that right?
This just applies to the alcohol.
The, the food part of it's still going to be going in, I guess, to the rear of that house, yeah, but.
Part of the council. Blah, blah. I'll come by, instead of it being an amendment, I'll do a repeal and replace. I'll get with Mr. Blummer, make sure you're okay. And we'll try to have a clean second reading. I'm happy with it the way it is right now. This is what I'm looking for.
I think you're opening up a whole lot of can of worms when you're changing it from a thousand feet back down to four hundred feet.
And I, I understand, I'm, I'm, I understand, Mr. Anwar. I'm just, I'm building a little consensus. You've got, everybody's in different areas on, and, uh, I'm just building consensus on making these amendments. And I'm very happy with the way it is.
I got, I got a question back to sidewalks. So, if it's my understanding, when, when a new construction happens and the plan is approved, the design is approved, they, they are supposed to be put in sidewalks, commercial properties, correct?
Yeah, we're going to have a whole discussion about this at the end of this.
Okay.
If you want to wait.
All right, it was waiting.
So I'd like to make a motion and put this on for first reading by title only.
Second. Make the motion a second, uh, first reading, title only.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Speaker?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
No.
Mr. Dallow?
Yes.
So, huh?
Yes.
In order to submit any ordinance number eighteen dash C four four establishing the permitting process and privileged permit for selling of the spent and controlled beverage within a product code within the state, we're going to have businesses located licensed by the state as a product code to sell alcohol.
Couldn't you want this back to you, Charles? My lady, so.
What, Wednesday, what procedure will, Wednesday card for me?
Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, Ms. Terry, I, I think it's important, one, and, and this is so early, but yet it's, here we are, because it's on for first reading. And I know all of us know it, but I think it's important to, to be able to tell the public, and for whatever reason you want to tell them. And I think Rod said pretty good without saying it, that everybody has these thoughts about this, and it may not all be the same thought. There's different pieces of it, whether it's where the man goes, or, or outside, or the distance from, you know, it's already in there. Is that, but for the public to understand, I think, and we'll have plenty of time. I'm sure there'll be a few meetings with the back house before all this is said and done. It's, it's, it's the councils. This is not saying there's going to be a private club that drinks with Arkansas. This is giving it the permission to, if this passes, right?
Sure.
Giving permission to said applicants to apply. And that all begins again with ABC, as you said, they, they got their own guidelines. So that's just something to throw out there. I know we all know that.
Well, it just opened up some boundaries for current establishments to pursue.
Yeah.
The ordinance has been in place since twenty eighteen, right? Because, well, I hate, people always ask me, why don't you have a private club, and nobody puts it in? They're more than welcome to, and the ordinance is about to.
Well, not to put it in, but to apply.
Whatever, yes.
We, that, that's my point, is you're not, and I can't, and we can't even together say, you are not a private club. We're saying, you have the ability to do it.
Yes.
But yeah, it's been on the books, and it's just, you're having to raise kind of forward it. And I'll tell you, as, I think, yeah, except for one, uh, and I've already been approached myself by another existing restaurant about it, too. Because, you know, it takes one and, and the other, so they're, they're not going to mean anything, it's just.
Again, everybody isn't happy with the existing ordinance. Everybody won't be happy with the three amendments.
Right.
I'm just trying to get a little bit closer.
True.
To maybe assist some of these owners, but I am trying to, I'm placating groups and they all make it. So.
So I have a question, and if she's not here to answer it, I don't know, maybe Charlotte can. The young lady that has, is requesting this to be changed, so she can apply, did she get her paperwork combined, still not? So we, we, we communicated that to her, I'm looking at Danielle, too.
Oh, yeah, Charlotte's called her, everything.
And maybe you're just.
Several times, I asked her to take it through.
And that's not our responsibility, I get that. I just wondered if.
Were the shoes here or not, attempt to keep moving?
Oh, I, I heard, I, I'm saying, yeah.
Did you, the, what we just voted on for this, those three, your amendments there, did you, you kept these sidewalks in there, right? You didn't take that out?
I kept it in there. I, I am placating a group that, you know, is up separated and, uh, just kind of eases it over with. Well, you'll have a number.
Well, I just, I mean, obviously, I, there's a bunch of stuff I don't like about this. I voted for this, because I want to go second reading, see how they can show it, that's always fun. But ultimately, uh, the, I mean, it might ask for how you got it. I certainly don't want to be in agreement all down the line.
You know what? I know down here on this side, I feel like we're, we're fine with a thousand feet. And down there, I, I look, I, you, I mean, there's no offense, I think zero.
Oh, that's a pun, yeah.
Yeah.
I'll never vote for anything that's over zero.
You know, and I think outside of you, everybody's okay with the tax.
Yeah.
I mean, but you, if you had your druthers, it would be zero.
Yeah.
I want you to, when you bring that back, before you look at it, I, we need to look at the wording and the structures of the fees and the fines and all of that, and make it painfully clear how that works.
The six-month deal, how it was concluded.
Yes.
So I will.
There's, there was a discussion originally about, there's a fee that you have to pay to file this application. And then another fee, that's your permit fee, and if it's halfway through the year, you may have. But, but we need to make that painfully clear, the way it works.
I'll work on. Okay, ABC has last, ABC has last, thanks, so we might send them.
You could say, because you can come as mad as you go to the whole thing, and ABC says no.
I'm, I'm, I'm going to vote too much, I understand, especially in the first call around, the way that happened, well, I'm talking about. ABC explained to me that it kind of starts off, they, they, they could and probably will come into the community and, and get a pulse. And they, he said to me on the phone, if, if we don't feel like your community wants it, we'll say, we'll say, well, no, no, that's not a quote. I guess it is, but.
They're not, yeah.
That's what they said, so.
And I don't know if they need to waste gas, or watch service.
Well, so, anyway, and that may change, I don't know. That's not official. Let me say a couple of things before we turn it over to, to the department report before I forget it. The, the wooden flag, uh, that has sat the pledge allegiance on, probably there behind that picture, uh, I put that up. Is Mr. Jill going to stand still here? So I wanted to put that, I'm sure he did want to say the flag. That's a little joke from last month, but that was donated to the city by Eric Edmondson. Thank you, Casey. Uh, he made that, and he does those and sells them. But he called me the other day, and he said, would you like to have this for, for, for the city? And I said, I put it in the city also, more prominently, I decided where we're going to put it. I think that's pretty cool. He also donated one or both of those flags.
No, we paid for one.
We did, for both of them. He donated one, he gave us the other, the US flag out there in the lobby along with the, the state flag. So just want to let you know, I thought that was pretty cool. Barbara Stewart, sad news, if you haven't heard, his past, HB's, uh, wife, widow, has passed. I think it's a funeral Saturday, I don't know that officially, but quite an icon, first lady, if you will, of Greenland. Uh, groundbreaking Mercy Clinic is tomorrow morning at nine AM at the new, where they're going to build a new Mercy Clinic, which is out at, uh, Westwood property that they purchased. So please, anybody that can come to that, please do. They're going to have some doctors and other folks talk, so, sorry. We're out of town, we're probably canceled. But anyway, that's, that's a big deal for the city, for them to build a new clinic out there.
Let me ask you something, you know, we may not know, are they moving?
To my, to our best part.
Yeah, they're moving this one and expanding, bringing in, minor things, bringing in more medical personnel, whether that's doctors or nurse practitioners, the inmates, clearly.
We, we first thought that might be a little satellite, but that's not the case, right? Everybody knows.
Because they're cramped in there. Yeah, I'm trying to get some empty buildings, get new doctors.
Sir?
We're trying to get more doctors.
Yeah. Uh, and I don't have a possibility, call them, it's nice. If you want to know, it's, it's a nice facility.
A new one?
Yeah.
I think they originally estimated like seven million, so.
Pretty nice.
Park at Walmart.
Oh, yeah, you do park at Walmart, I guess they're going to shuttle you or make us walk on the trail.
Now we're walking.
Are we really?
That's what she said.
I do. We can bring the trolley, yeah.
Or five-foot rack.
Absolutely. Uh, I think that's all I have, sort of a little nupside of us. So with that, I would say to the council department reports and questions from council, several of them are here. Not every single one, but several departments are here. Anything for anybody?
I got two.
Yes, sir.
One is for, I guess, Mr. Turner.
Yes, sir.
And, good God, the stoplight coker in center. I mean, it went from turning like that quick when somebody pulled up off coker, and everybody complaining because it lets one car out, stacks up three hundred, to now, this morning, I sat there at five fifteen for about five minutes looking at a red light that never turned back green and finally did. And I thought, wow, we, I don't think there was any more asphalt overlay that excuse. I don't think there's a power outage, I know of. I just wondered, I mean, I don't mind taking a torch out there, cutting that thing down, and.
And I, I heard the same thing today, too, Ken, I saw a little.
Kim was out there this morning.
Who?
Kim.
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 Kim, yeah.
Kim was out there this morning with the cabinet open, because I, too, have the same complaint. It's set, maybe set in white already, and Kim was out there.
Kim, gotcha.
And so.
Sorry, Joe, just help me out.
Yeah, thank you. That one is the one with the sensor opposed to the camera.
Right.
And so I don't know if there's something wrong with it. The other thing that can happen is if they get out of, out of sync.
Yeah.
So I think she's reprogramming that, but.
Well, once you ever get that one fixed, you can go down to the one there down there in Center Street. And then when you're eastbound, and that turn arrow goes, for all the folks that go up Denver Street towards, uh, you know, north, and there's a lot of souls sitting there. It's so exciting to sit there and wait and watch the people in the dark there, ghost drivers, what have you, turn. I enjoy it a lot, I really do, very interesting one. Um, I think the one down, I'm trying to think of all the complaints I get, and then I take them along myself. Just those two, I guess. I, I don't know, I, you know, there's little trucks driving around on Mars, we can't seem to get a stoplight. You're about the third street guy, I'll be right on that, so it's not even you. I just, if you got to be a class or something, I'd be more happy to take, pay out of my pocket, I'd be more happy to help Kim or whoever's in charge. Of course, I've called the state, and they always say, well, it's the city's lights. I said, well, we're going to shut them off. Well, we can't, uh, well, no, you know, some lady in the belly, they come, wait, are they, are lights on? Because I don't want to shoot them out with a BB gun, I don't matter. I'm just tired of it. And if it gets old, and that's the traffic, you know, if those were working properly, I mean, obviously, the bypass is a good idea, but it would certainly help a little bit get traffic going through if those were working. I ran out of school, there's no school traffic, so it's, there's no reason for us to be five deep at that stoplight at five fifteen AM. I didn't, and then I, then the poor cop gonna pull me over, ask me why I'm running it, and then I'm, I just, you know, it'll be strange for, I, I hate that, but I guess it'll happen. I, I just, and I had this couple guys tell me this morning about the one with coker. I said, yeah, I sat through it as well, I don't know. I thought I'd say something. And the only other thing I got, I guess, well, I guess it's for you, too. It's, and I don't know if you even know anything about it, but it's a turn lane on Mount Harmony. It was, money was a proportion for a long time ago.
At the, to the school?
Yeah. And obviously, what we're doing out there, by the way, is awesome, have that little bridge.
Yes, so that was one of the things that we presented in the budget, that school has redone the, the routing.
Right.
In the morning and the afternoon. So it kind of took the need for that turn lane, the lane. And so we reprogrammed that money for some other projects, because it's a high-dollar project for a little turn lane.
A million and a half.
Yes, and so.
The right way.
The right, yes. So when we did our budget hearing last year, we, we reprogrammed that money to these other two projects that we're working on right now.
Does it mean, and I, I don't, if I can interrupt, that, that project, I mean, I was, I was all for that. I mean, I'm the one that first put it in there, and then I got, and we talked about it during the budget, and I, I think everybody agreed. We all know how bad it's needed. You lived there, and, and I know, we all know how bad it's needed during school, but the, I, the thought process now is, how do you, how do you, uh, what's the word I'm looking for? How do you justify a million and a half two years ago, which I don't know what it is now.
Yeah, obviously, that would be.
I easily say it's two million. And we got two prices from, from Jeremy, because we wanted to, we wanted to go, let's be, let's be real, seriously. Just can you not just go over there, move that, those utilities, and put another slab of pavement down? Right? Or, as we should, follow our own guidelines, pepper lighting, curb to gutter, sidewalks on both sides, and that's how it ended up being a half. So it was like, okay, for that, for that amount of time. And, and really, it's not time anymore, I think it's more safety. It is some time, but, uh, the last thing you want, and I know Chiefs deals with this, or used to, I don't know if they're still doing it, because I was taking, I was the guilty, I was one of those guilty ones that used to take my grandson out there, because heaven forbid you put him away with us. And I just said that publicly, and I can't believe I said it, but. So it was thought, how do you justify it when you, when you have all these other projects that need to be really fixed and taken care of? How far, two million dollars?
Well, the school only fixed the, the issue in the afternoon.
Yeah, so.
The mornings, you all still drop off the same, but in the afternoon, there's two separate pickup spots. While that's great, but the, the problem is, and we have the will knows, the center lane where you go pick up if you have older kids is more crowded than the outer lane. Um, and so what happens is it gets blocked, and then you have all these people on Mount Harmony that are waiting to turn into that center one, because that is the most crowded, that people cannot see. And so people coming down Mount Harmony, like from Marymount, they'll just fly around. And what's going to happen is that a kid is going to get hit. I watched it several times, yeah, where a kid almost got hit because people are aggravated because they want to go through. So they did fix the afternoon, but the mornings are still going to be an issue on trying to turn.
I approached the school, I, I don't want to say it unofficially, but I did ask about the shared cost on that project, and there was no interest whatsoever. I, I, I'm not saying the board and Matt didn't say that, but it was just, it kind of fell on deaf ears at that.
We definitely talked with them on that, or do we need it? And they, and they told us that they changed, I didn't allow them to tell me in the afternoon, but, uh, they changed the, the flow, so it was not a problem, it's not a problem.
No, that's, and I even offered an idea, which might have seemed stupid, but the old, I call them the old Disneyland, Disneyland lines that you get in and do this number.
Certainly.
The hill, the circuit up above, these hills, these points are, where, where it was just an Eagle Scout project, but, but I thought, what if we got up there and the city paid to do that future property that is more important, just to get more traffic off? That didn't work for me, but just to get more traffic off. So I, he answered the question, but it's, it's still there, but we don't, we did the engineering on it. We had the, we didn't pursue it.
I got.
Sorry.
Little ladies, the ladies run over, fragile.
We'll look at that again.
It's just, it's just trying to figure out which is the right, when, uh, I hate it.
Well, and it, it is better in the afternoon. It's, it used to stack up to like two forty. Now it's like two fifty, it starts stacking up. And I said, I'm all about this, I think any water department or stuff there at the top of the hill, I mean, you can always go around. If you can get to Laurel, you can, or whatever, but you can go around, but you have to get there. And then what happens is people will get out here in the northbound lane and go up the hill and pass all these cars, and that's gonna cause a head on at some point and then it's like, so. I, I'm just wondering if I knew it was talked about and then I'd ask.
I just wanna say, Jeff, I like the way this is presented. I like, I like their graphics. And at some point, and I don't know if it's them or who, but if you could get with planning and them and present a master street plan showing what's gonna be a collector, what's gonna be expanded, how traffic moves in the next ten years, and have that presented. I like their colors and, you know, and have a, I don't know, oranges for future, future roads that are collector and move traffic out. I'd like to see that at some point, where, where we need to be in ten years, about the time we need that dam, you know?
That's what that was designed to help us get to. So we, uh, just make sure you have a budget for it.
But I'd like to see, see a, I want a large blown up master street plan on a wall at some point where I can walk in there and say, that's gonna be a collector, that's gonna move traffic in and out.
Okay, anybody else got anything for anybody else?
I, I, I wanna call on the Ken's rant for a minute about the Denver light. We talked about this a little bit. In the evening, it's this time of year, I get it, but the sun is real bad. And one thing we talked about is I'd like to search the option of putting a single light up the road there, you know?
Heads up light?
Uh, yeah. Heads up light, that's what I thought that's called?
No, it isn't.
Yeah, you know, so, I mean, when you're like coming, when you're like coming from this direction, if somehow that light sneaks up on you, that you get about the dairy and go, uh-oh, everybody stop. If you have a light, you know, it's, hey, the light's right up there. But that one wrecked the other night when we got T-Bone, Craig Jones, he couldn't see the light at all there. You know, maybe there's another one up by Barbies or whatever, wherever.
Put one, both these down in with them?
Yeah. And, and I think, I'd say, when you had told me that, we, we've also talked about, there's already a pole. We need to get one on the courthouse side of the square.
It's on the budget this year.
I think, I think we put it, you wanna talk about, you may not know.
No.
So if there was a crosswalk coming in front of the square to Mavericks now, it would be there. Coming out of that gate on the square, there's actually a pole with nothing on it, not, not even ready to camera. But anyway, on, on the, you know.
On the courthouse.
South side, on the courthouse side.
You can almost see it.
That gives you a heads up that you're getting ready to hit and see a light in front of the edge. I'll show you.
Okay.
I'll show you where.
Mavericks pretty good.
Yeah, that's on the budget.
I have a question for Tom. Tom, personally, in the budget, and I think it's part of the succession plan, you budgeted having a system, should we bring in? Are you still working on that?
As things progress, yes.
Okay.
There, we can have a, we can talk further about this on Thursday.
I was just impressed that you kinda have a plan, because it sounds like you're a higher god of ad finishing reflection.
You're saying Tom's old also? You're saying Tom's old as well?
I'm older than dirt.
I have another, I have, I don't know what department it, I need to ask, so I guess I'll do it in council forum.
We did, absolutely.
Okay, council forum, I have a constituent, Donna Goldstein, she's not out here, that's great. So she's been giving me a hard time. Well, let me back off. She's pleasantly asked me to ask the administration about the tornado sirens. She can't hear the tornado sirens. She said she could hear the old one, it was great, and she said she never hears the thing go off, she can't hear, and she's upset about it. She's figuring she's gonna get killed and not, I guess. So that's it.
That's it.
I passed on.
Yeah, absolutely. So get your hand up or you can stretch it.
Oh, I know.
Go ahead.
We've talked to her, she's called to be, Charles talked to her, I've talked to her, but when she's called, respectively, it's been like weeks since we've had tornado warnings, so I don't know when she thought she might have heard it or not have heard it. But again, the reminder is, is that the tornado warnings are to alert people to go inside. You're not meant to hear it from inside of your home. Um, and also, in respect to that area, the Bell Park siren was supposed to sound that area, correct you?
She's more covered by the Westwood one, which is actually closer than the Park one that used to cover the area.
We talked about that today.
And this one's actually louder than the old one, so I don't understand the difference.
Well, all that being said, I think.
I wonder if I should talk to everybody.
She has, she has. She's not talked to regularly, but she has made it known.
I, I did, I'm, I'm betting it because, you know, we tested during the week at some point.
We tested tomorrow morning.
What time?
Ten o'clock.
Well, tomorrow morning.
It's always on Facebook.
Tomorrow morning, you can test at ten o'clock.
Other guys on Facebook.
Does, does she have a mobile phone around, you know?
Yes.
I think you're all the time, you set her up a little.
Well, some of you can't afford it.
Some can afford.
Some, some you can't avoid having.
I mean, apparently it doesn't.
Well, of course, I can say flip phones.
Yeah, as soon as, as soon as I get through, hopefully we'll, the groundwork is, I was talking, five minutes, I'm gonna go directly from there. She will hear that, too. So I, all due respect, we love Donna Goldstein, we really do. And she may or may not be one of those that can't hear as well as she used to. Two, she, well, two, and I don't mean that disrespectfully, because I don't hear like I used to either. And or number, or two is that she wasn't even home when we tested it last. So now, on, on, in her defense, we got a couple of other calls. When I say we, Kristen got a couple of calls from.
People like immigrants.
The grins. So they, she would have heard the same one. There used to be, the old pole was literally in her backyard, yours and Don's.
Yeah, it's right there on the Jones property, which now is the Marvane property.
Yeah.
Way across the road.
Yeah.
It was only, yes, we just visited that site the other day, trying to see if that's where we need to put one back. So here's the saga of tornado sirens in a nutshell. I'll try to shorten them. We, it has, it has been a crazy trip with these, with these sirens. Four, we have four up now. There's only four up now.
Yes.
But we have four in place. We did move a, a couple of them around. Mount Harmony doesn't have one, but we moved them around to better cover.
But in that's real good.
Yeah, those ones got one in lieu of Mount Harmony. So the fifth one, which is, was to be in Bell Park. And they went up and put a pole up, as you probably all know, and went directly into a water line, pretty easy digging. That's the only easy digging you'll find in Bell Park is in a water line, and they did it. Pole fell down due to being on a water line, broke our water line, blah, blah, blah. We, Casey and I met with this company to go back up there and move it away from said water line, down the road where the new road, you know, that new wire that we got, we're about nineteen acres. We picked a spot. Weeks and weeks and weeks have gone by. We finally got the siren in and, and he showed up, a guy showed up the other day, last week, to drill. You know where I'm going with this, at the, at the new site, well, he got this dig.
Two hours.
And that's it, huh?
In two hours.
In two hours. All that's history. As of today, uh, the pole's still laying there. The siren is in your possession. I had called the company, I don't remember the name.
Pole excavation.
Yeah, I called SWEPCO, they, they said, we don't even do that anymore if it's rock like you got up there, here's who we hire. So I called the guy at Midland. At Midland.
Midland.
And he's gonna be there in the morning. And he didn't say, I can't, I'll see if I can. He said, I will dig you a hole. And we're gonna put the pole where we originally.
Just bolt that on the top of the Bell Park.
You don't wanna do that.
Put it on the water.
You can, but you don't. So no, it's not a good idea. And I don't go in the life, it's not a good idea. So we're gonna dig a hole in the morning, they are, and that holds them one back up. And you'll probably never even see it, because it's gonna kinda blend in with that. But that really should take, that's not gonna take care of this, Miss Donna. It could.
All I have to hear about is you don't tell Donna that I've brought it.
We will. We'll let her know.
Hold that chair.
And, and.
This doesn't fix her phone, right?
Well, we do love Donna and we appreciate her, and so we're trying to make it right. And we've got one more to go up and everything should be pretty good.
Well, she mentioned how long it's been since we had a last tornado warning. Now we probably test it every week, so.
Every month.
No, once a month.
Months.
Months, testing.
Supposed to be on the first Tuesday.
Yeah, first.
Oh, so it's not weekly?
No.
First Tuesday unless the weather doesn't.
We have so much goofy weather, you don't wanna test it the day there's a thunderstorm, because people will freak out and they think there's, there's a tornado. But again, they're not really to warn you in your house. And, and fortunately, I can hear it. Mine, the ones there is me in my house, thankfully, but I open the door, I can sure hear it.
Well, I don't, we're like, I don't know if that's the official term or motto of the alarm company, that we're not trying to warn you in your house.
Well, I'm just saying they're not. It's probably not. It's probably not their official thing, but it is.
I mean, somebody.
We can't guarantee you're gonna hear it.
So if I'm asleep at two in the morning, the radio comes, whatever the sirens are, then.
Yeah, it's your phone.
Ten thousand, I will tell you this, ten thousand people are not gonna hear those sirens.
Right?
You would need fifty in the city for it to wake you up, everyone, properly.
And the same, the same.
These are louder than the old.
The same complaint that we're having, where Donna didn't hear it, we remember people on Facebook tell us they could hear them within an excellior.
Exactly.
So it's kinda like.
There's so many, yeah, you have the, the, the cloud covers, the wind.
We had somebody say they could hear it out of Washburn. I mean, so I don't understand how people in town couldn't hear it, but I guess it depends on the. Huh?
They lie to you as well.
I can, I can hear it by the living room of my house.
Yeah, Casey, yeah.
They never made one.
So anyway, it is what it is. We're getting the fifth one up hopefully tomorrow or no later than Wednesday.
You're supposed to be working today, you know?
Can we move on to the sidewalk?
Just get a tornado. I don't, it's, it's citizen form, y'all show. I'm sorry, council form.
Sidewalk.
We're gonna have a study session within the planning commission. That's, that's the easy answer, we can dive into it.
Well, so to whoever asked that question earlier, um, is that part of the regulations now, though, when you go out there and build? That you build, you put in a sidewalk?
Unless you pay the sidewalk fee to get it.
They do pay a sidewalk fee, yes.
You were asking specifically about the, uh, storage facility. Storage facility paid a fee, uh, when they got their permit. That is based on the cost given to us by the street department, uh, on, uh, lame concrete, so much a foot. And, uh, you remember what the storage facility paid for?
Three thousand dollars.
Three thousand dollars.
That, that fee is based on the project cost?
Yes. And so.
Well, why not, isn't there the, the ordinance does build the, I mean, the, what's that number, six, oh, six, oh, four? Oh, six, oh, four.
We have oh, six, oh, four and oh, six, oh, seven. And oh, six, oh, six. No, that's oh, four, here.
What's oh, six, oh, seven?
Six, oh, seven is a fee that we charge for our residential areas. Uh, and that's one thing that we're gonna look at in our study session, because it builds from one dollar to eighty thousand dollars. You get a fee for fifty dollars. Uh, the other one is eighty thousand in one dollar and over, you have a one hundred dollar fee.
I thought it was though.
Two more, two more left.
You're required to go a sidewalk unless you can't go a sidewalk because of the terrain. And then you go to the planning commission, they go, yeah, you're right, that's on the side of Millwood and one sidewalk there anyway, so you don't, I guess you pay a fee or something.
That is about payment in lieu of.
Payment in lieu of.
Yeah.
Two different things.
But that was, the payment in lieu of was for terrain, the terrain, according to this, oh, six, oh, four.
So oh, six, oh, four, if you look in the procedure section of that ordinance, it starts off with saying something to the effect of preliminary flat with the submission of preliminary flat. So when an individual comes in and builds a singular home, we don't get a preliminary flat. Or someone comes in to build a singular commercial business like the storage units, they don't submit a preliminary flat. If that ordinance is solely based for developments only, which is a broad definition, but generally development is gonna be two or more lots, which is where they're gonna reflet existing parcels.
Procedure.
When you say developments only.
Take your moral objectivity and say, oh, I don't. Formal, number was that?
Well, I guess what, I mean, my question, I guess, is, I thought we had ordinances in place, whatever number they may be, that said, if you go build something or re, get a permit and redo this, we're gonna make you build a sidewalk. Unless for some reason you can't build a sidewalk, then we're gonna charge you a fee for a sidewalk. Is that not correct?
No. You can get out and build a sidewalk, even if it's on a flat earth, it's paid a fee.
Would you ever build a sidewalk?
The, the fee is, is better referred to, and this is what I, I call it, is a maintenance fee. I charge a sidewalk fee with every single, uh, building permit issued by the residential or commercial.
But why don't they go build a sidewalk? Like, who's that? I mean, that's just kind of, you can't.
I, I, I get that. I just don't have anything to require that. But the line issue with it is, we have an ordinance, oh, six, oh, four dictates local streets, get a sidewalk on one side, collectors get a sidewalk on both. What if I have a singular house that, that's built on this side of a local, all the sidewalk on this side, but it's not top, top rapidly unable to have sidewalk, what do I do then? So I think part of the master street plan, which is what I'm wanting to propose, is not only do we propose streets, we propose sidewalks and where we want them installed. And if a homeowner is on the wrong side of the street and the sidewalk that we want, we have a payment in lieu of.
Well, I think the residential makes sense not to do that for what the regime just said. On the commercial corridors, I mean, you got the master zoning map or whatever it's called, that says all this is commercial C two all the way out.
All of it is R five.
Right? So all of that, all of that that you got read that says this is commercial corridor, you know, if you'd have gone tractor supply, the storage building, the.
Tractor supply has a sidewalk.
Vet clinic, all, all of those, you know, Dollar Tree and all of those little things down through there. I mean, you have a sidewalk on most of Liberty Drive, I don't disagree, you know?
One of them.
Then.
Tractor supply already has a sidewalk.
So for example, with the, the curve development, it's a development, and so it will, it will come with a preliminary flat process of a sidewalk.
Like the, well, another one that's a good example probably is the Terry Smith Trailer Park deal. Trailer Park is probably a bad name for that. Food truck park, or, you know, hey, you gotta build a sidewalk, because you're almost to it right now. You know, I mean, that's just another link, a chunk of that that we don't have to build down Center Street.
Yeah, so I think this is good information that we're gonna try to implement in our study session to present to the commission and present it all.
We're gonna have, Jeff, is gonna attend the, uh, study session with the planning commission and we're going to do a study session on sidewalks. So all those new places he's talking about, we don't have sidewalk yet. We should have sidewalk, because we can go from Liberty to the commuter parking lot at this point. But do we have easement for all those?
The storage building, did we get the easement?
No, that, that would. But that puts poor Danielle in a spot, because then she's out there trying to hustle the easements.
Hunter's taking him over this time.
Okay, well, why don't we capture easements when we can and when the flats are built? I mean, isn't that the purpose of the planning commission? Isn't that the purpose of the planning department to try?
I mean, isn't that the purpose of the planning commission? Isn't that the purpose of the planning department to try to? Think in the future, grab these things when we can? I mean, cause it's, it's kinda onerous on the city to go back. And I mean, we, we had to go to Fort Musulman.
The, the sidewalk in front of Waffle House, that was a voluntary sidewalk, it was not wired. It's, I don't believe they have even. That's just a sidewalk they installed.
But an easement's just one thing, says you need to draw a line right there at this point before you accept it.
No, I agree.
I mean, is that it?
Yeah. But that will, that will work in conjunction with the ordinance that requires us to have a sidewalk. Right.
I just don't know why we go through all this stuff. Danielle went there, and then we're down here building, and we're not leased at the very minimum, gaining easements. It just seems like.
Sonny, are you sure there's sidewalk at Tractor Spot?
Yeah, I talked about the trees.
I thought that was a great deal.
No.
It's gonna bring you water. It's still harvest. I'm just gonna move in.
I mean, no, build a.
Right.
Well, and again, that's the reason why, you know, like the, the storage facility that, that sidewalk comes here, they doesn't go anywhere. We have the money for it. But again, the planning department that builds sidewalks, the street department builds sidewalks. So we collect the money for it.
Yes, the board's that money go. Where does that money go? It does go to the sidewalk company.
Still, that's totally inadequate. When you're talking about getting three thousand dollars, and we just spent five hundred thousand?
Seven, three thousand.
Six, six hundred thousand? You know, we'd be a lot better off having them build the sidewalk, and even if it was wrong.
That actually overbays for the, the width of that property, based on the most recent price I got, seven fifty a foot. Uh, that's.
Can you build out? Yeah, remember that? Yeah, so what he's talking about is X amount of dollars per square foot of concrete, putting in a sidewalk by a unit, and I love unit. But what you're talking, and I, believe me, that prop, that went from four hundred to six hundred within a year and a half. But that's an engineer. That's a whole lot of other.
We, we can skip all that if we make them do it.
No, I agree. I, I agree. And I, and I, when, when we say sidewalk to nowhere, eventually it is to somewhere.
Yeah.
You start, you start looking.
Well, it's the, you know, it's the.
So.
Your six hundred thousand dollar project is maybe four hundred because you got less.
There's already, in, in.
But I remember on Cedar Street, well, another two places were built there by Hall Homes. Uh, there was a payment in lieu to move that sidewalk over to the north side of that street to, to back up to the EMS building. And that, and we said, we will take that sidewalk from there and continue on the old hack. It's never been done. I mean, I, all I can do is collect the money. I don't build sidewalks.
But, but, and I'm not, or, I'm, so Sonny, tell, talk to us about, so you have a fee.
Yes.
Which is very minimal.
Very.
Well, like Hunter says, that's, that's considered kind of a maintenance fee.
Right.
Now, we are going, like I said, I am going to take it up two more, not just because it ends in eighty thousand.
Right.
And, you know, we need to go under sixty thousand or, you know, three hundred thousand.
For our, my benefit too, there, I think, is, is, talk, explain the difference in the fee and the payment in lieu of.
Well, the payment in lieu of would be the cost of.
An actual sidewalk.
Put a sidewalk in over a certain period, yeah, certain.
Right. How do we get to that? Is there?
Normally, I would go to the street department, Jeff, uh, now, and say, what is the current price of a sidewalk, uh, standard sidewalk? Or foot? And he'd come back with, uh, seven and a half or whatever it is for foot. And that would be the payment in lieu.
No, I, I get the formula, I, I'm not.
Yeah.
How do we get to requiring that payment in lieu of? And, and I've said, we've talked about Casey. Casey's stuck a sidewalk out there that was somewhere, but now it is to somewhere. So where, do we have something in place to ensure that payment in lieu of for?
Well, it's supposed to be, they want to get their building permit, they have to build it.
Well, but you, you don't, I don't think you have that in to rock point.
Well, that's what I'm asking.
You don't have these, I mean, we.
Well, I.
We didn't build it first.
And we don't even have these.
They don't let the building permit out until you pay for the sidewalk or you put it off there.
So we, we received payment in lieu of, if y'all remember, unless I'm mistaken, uh, is out for a trail.
Yeah, we.
Out by Dogger's was, turned out to follow that creek.
Right.
Right there.
Prairie Creek.
Yeah, so obviously, well, we, didn't we receive payment in lieu of?
We didn't receive payment in lieu of, we also received payment in lieu of for green space out there as well.
Right.
But we did gain the easement, the trail.
We, we still get, that's right.
We still have the trail.
That was a part.
The mon, the money for the payment in lieu of on green space is sitting in the green space account. We still have a green space account. And, uh, the rest would have went into the trails.
Uh, you see my point? I guess, is, my question is, do we have the tool in place to make sure that we get these payment in lieu of, not just the fees?
According to the payment in lieu of section, the only reason we should ever grant that would be for topographical reasons. The only reason.
I don't want the payment, I wanted to build the sidewalk. But, but if they, if they have the choice, we either should have the money to be able to build one.
Yeah, I mean.
That's what I'm not getting my mind around, though.
That's what I'm.
The only reason we have this payment in lieu of is for topographical reasons. You know, they don't call this stuff, but we don't have sidewalks.
But, I'm out. We received a payment in lieu of as for said trail, and it's not topographical or possible. It is very lenient to build a trail, but we received.
You remember it.
We went ahead and took it.
He came to the council and asked permission for that in the council committee.
Yeah. What, what was that, your congressman?
It was whoever was getting ready to develop all that, actually.
Across the road, ain't?
Yeah. The creek on the other side of. So you got houses on this side of you. It's the creek that separates those houses from.
Yeah, back to, back to the house.
Soul Beach.
Soul Beach.
Okay, let's go pick, hang on, go back to, go to the storage buildings.
Okay.
Just that project. How come there's not a sidewalk in front of the storage buildings?
There's nothing in places that says they have to.
So, so at this point, that storage building, those guys are from out of state, like Alabama or something?
No, he lives here.
So why doesn't oh six oh four?
We have the money to build the sidewalk.
Why doesn't oh six oh four require them to build a sidewalk?
Because it speaks directly to being in a development.
And the procedure being our commercial guidelines.
Well, the header says, read that.
North, the ordinance amended five seventy land subdivision and development code requiring and regulating the installation of sidewalk for pedestrian circulation system as part of a new residential and commercial development. In the city of Greenwood, Arkansas. And it's planning jurisdiction, planning jurisdiction and for other purposes.
So a guy building the storage buildings is not a commercial development?
I realize that, I realize that sounds goofy. Because he's developing the property, but, uh, in, according to our subdivision regulations or development guidelines, when they come to us, they present, that's going through the whole planning process.
What I would like to see is specifically commercial, I'm talking about, cause like you're saying, any out there where y'all are coming down, it doesn't make any sense for a guy down there on Soul Beach to build. Fifty foot sidewalk in the middle of the field, I mean, get that.
Well, that's where we leave all the payment in lieu of, and we add, if you provide a payment in lieu of your footage, it needs to.
Commercial.
Line up with our, with our plans.
Commercial development of any kind, when you pull a permit to build something. You gotta build a sidewalk. Like that red hunk of junk they're building over on Coker Street, they're making a sidewalk.
It's residential.
That's actually residential.
Okay, God.
That's our vibe.
You can build that, you can build that red thing in a residential.
We can't dictate.
What is that?
We can't dictate architectural characteristics.
Is that, what is that, they're building?
That's a house.
It's actually a beauty shop slash house from what I've seen.
You can live in that house.
I heard, I was told it's a beauty shop.
Downstairs is a beauty shop, and upstairs is where they're living.
Yeah.
So. That's all sold by the owners.
That's, that's, that's close.
All right. You gonna do something, buddy? I'd like to say something.
Yes, sir.
If you buy a building permit, put a sidewalk in. I'm building six houses on Beet Street with a sidewalk to nowhere. The sidewalk runs all the way down in front of all six of those houses, and I'm learning tonight that I paid to have a sidewalk fee.
Keep going.
And put the sidewalk in.
But it's not going nowhere.
It's not going anywhere.
But it will. It's gonna come down on the hack, and it's gonna join the sidewalk. That's PD.
We had a long discussion in some of these regulations.
Sir.
There, we were going through some of the, some of the regulations years ago, and Paul Rush was here, and we were talking about sidewalks and all this. And I was like. I build in Oklahoma City, and I'm not building the finest homes in Oklahoma City. He said, you put a sidewalk in, or you don't get the CO. That's it.
That's correct.
That's correct.
Same way in federal.
And he said, you just put the sidewalk in, cause there's a big conversation about corner lots. He said, you hit a corner lot, you put a sidewalk down on one side, and a sidewalk down the front, or you don't get the CO.
And you plant a tree in the yard.
And you plant a tree in the yard, and so. And he said, that's just the end of it. He said, I'm building out there, and I'm on the council, and he said, put sidewalks in.
I mean, I, I don't.
Well, that's one of the.
I don't do it commercial, but I, I think if you build a house or you remodel a house, you should put a sidewalk in, even if it's a sidewalk to nowhere.
So how do we get to that?
I agree.
So what do we gotta do to get to that point where, uh, you're ahead?
That's what they're working on.
My thought, that's what's good.
That's what you did.
I just don't want to get to the point where we've got Danielle going out to Utah to compete with the Mormon church to try to.
No, she wanted to go to Utah.
It almost went to that, cause I couldn't get them to get on the board. I appreciate you caring about her.
But that gets very complex.
And we're, we're getting ready to face it again. I mean, it's gonna, hopefully, we're not on wood, it's gonna be easier. Phase two, coming back into Bass Street, they're all local. I think, of course, that stopped us before with the local, but, uh.
Y'all might know this, I've got to go back to this red building.
Yeah.
What is this place zone, and why are we living in a business? Certainly something's off.
It's a home occupation. So it's just like anyone that wants to run a home occupation in the Forest Hills edition, or the Eastern Hills edition.
Right.
So it's a, it's a single family home, zone R one. She's gonna apply for a home occupation permit. If she doesn't get it, she will operate the one singular room that she built in front of her business, in front of her home, as I said. So. She's following it.
I just wanna make sure we've got a business license of some sort or some work, and then your taxes are getting paid, all that.
So right now, she's building a home, and she's built a home with one door that opens to the exterior for a single chair beauty salon. And that may be a pe, single chair beauty salon, and she can't provide any services to the public because it's not, we're not there yet. She's just building a house first.
Where's she going to park?
In Dravide.
Just one chair, thirty minute park.
There's one right around the corner from me that's been there forever.
Yeah.
And, I mean, I, we have an old house. Forever.
You have been there for a long time.
I mean, my question to, 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 to my wife, certainly, it's like it's on the one. Uh, was how, how does she build in the middle of a building?
Have we fought that, we fought that, and I, I called every, uh, representative that we had, including Lee Johnson, and. And they, uh, says, they, people we fighting on that's too strong. We're trying to go back and amend it, amend it, and they, they, and they were able to.
Cause that was put in right when we went.
That was, we're playing Italy.
How's it residential between all the commercial stuff?
That's what it was originally zone, that one.
Right beside her, you got, you got commerce on one side of her, residential on the other.
I think it was a house before that was torn down. The other was your garage there. Cause there was a, there was a level in front of her.
So the developer can tell you, you gotta have your house three foot three from a certain side, or you can't build.
In his subdivision.
Subdivision, yeah. But a single R one lot, we can't tell her what to build.
Right.
Doesn't make a little sense.
Well, he can do it because it's his building.
It's not his building.
No, no, I can, I can decide what I want in that subdivision.
It's between him and the other three members, but there's subdivisions, there's subdivisions in chat across him that you can't put vinyl siding on.
Right.
And that's, that's in their covenants, and the people know that, and they buy a lot in there.
And we had rules on our lots, people know that beforehand, it wouldn't matter we.
Vinyl siding is what started all this anyway, because they had the, uh, rumor that Springdale was gonna outlaw vinyl siding. And, uh, the home developers such that they went crazy.
So a home developer in Little Rock is lobbying the state representatives to adhere to his rules. But a city entity can't have rules that get adhered to.
So if he wanted to set the speed limit in his subdivision to ninety miles an hour, they can do that?
That's why lobbyists have a lot of money.
That's why builders have a lot of money.
It's politicians.
Politicians don't have to be the money, I love politicians. I'm not in our luck.
Anything else, any other part there, yeah, for council.
Oh, yeah. So go ahead, Brian. I was just asking about the, uh, as of the, the ROMs, if you're anything about that. They closed, I do know that, along with the library. All I know is that Jacob is on a dozer, going at it. And what, if you're asking me why he's pushing this this way, this way, I don't know. He probably knows better than anybody, cause he's talked to them. Uh, all, both properties are closed. Uh, he's going full blast. He, he is just, just a personal thing, or for him, I guess, I thought it was pretty cool. But, but nobody's said anything about it in a while. I'll bring it up. Hesitant, the, the property behind the Davis Gym that we all weren't crazy about. He is now, he has hired.
Roll Ridge.
Roll Ridge to go in there and do exactly what he presented to the city that he was gonna do, so he's not there. I mean, it's still his land. And that dirt is being removed pretty quickly. And it's going out the back door or onto Denver, cause we asked him not to come out on Center or our street now. So they're going out to Denver, which.
Our street.
Our highway. Uh, so that's happening. I, I, I'm putting, I'm saying that so Jacob is now able to focus, and it's his business, not mine, out there on the, on the, or.
He's not visiting the bridge for the lake anymore?
No, he's done. I will say, the only thing that I've been hesitant to ask him, but I can ask him, and he's gonna, he's gonna give us a quote, just like we're gonna get two other quotes, is building a pond. At the new senior center building, cause that's gonna be required because of the water or the sirens question, just like the Church of Christ. So. Just so you know, he'll be able to bid on, or bid on that, just like two other, whoever else we get to do.
But there's no timeline on the, on, on ROMs, I mean.
Not really, I mean, I've heard the same thing that the, the mayor has, everything's signed.
Yeah.
You know, when we haven't received any construction plans, we had the preliminary that showed, you know, basically how they wanted to, to position and all that, but we don't have any plans on it.
Which, which does bring me to another announcement, if you haven't heard, and I forgot about this, I'm gonna have to tell you. So, so to request prayers, Cheryl Garner. Who is the realtor out there with Jacob, everybody probably knows Cheryl, has been dying, is in, uh, Charleston, South Carolina, with, uh, cancer. All of a sudden, and she has leukemia. She was out there helping her daughter get set up in her school and stuff. I mean. Noticed she couldn't see well, seeing black blotches, and took her to the hospital. She was literally looking through blood in her eye. And so she has, uh, I can't remember the title, the name of it, but it's leukemia. Uh, and they started chemo within two days, so it's pretty, pretty severe. Uh, she's handling it. Yeah, and they're looking at bone marrow, hoping to see if she can have it.
Yeah.
And so she's starting to feel those, uh, reaction from the chemo, but she's in good spirits and.
She must be, did you say that she was looking at bone marrow crack?
Yeah, that's what, yeah. They're waiting to see if she can do it.
We talked to her mom thirty nine.
Yeah, all that went into that. But she's by herself, other than her daughter, which, I mean, I'm not gonna say that's good for her, but Cheryl Garner's a very, she would kill me if she knew I was even announcing this. Not really, because she's cutting, cutting prayers. Uh, for, and I'll tell you specifically, is to, for the chemo to kill the cancer, and not to damage everything else in her body, and for the infections not to pile up, because she, she'll be depleted. Or anything that could infect her. So she, she needs a prayer, so it, it just hit her really, really quick.
Cause she wants to get back home and take care of her mom.
And, and her mother is not a nanny-ish. So she, and she is a primary caretaker for her mom.
Yeah.
Anyway. Sorry to lay that on you, but I don't like to do that ever. But I, I don't, I don't know details. I think, I see you asked me about the man, but it's moving forward. Everybody's, they're as far as they're.
Reason he's moving that dirt that way, by the way, we talked about it, it's so hard, he's got a ripper down on a dozer, and it's ripping it. The reason he's moving that dirt that way, by the way, he told me, it's so hard. He's got ripper down on the dozer and he's ripping it. So as he's ripping it, he's pushing, pushing.
And then taking it, and most of the.
Some of that's gonna all go back to the back, but he's pushing the, what he's pushing forward, it's easier for those, uh, tractors and dump trucks to pick it up.
That's what I'm saying.
Because it's too far to push it.
No bar, you have to, it's kind of hard to lock, pretty much, I guess.
Yeah, it's really.
But he's trucking it. When he does rip and get up, he's gonna, he's trucking it. You have to go around to the back, right?
He's pushing the shorts, all the longs. Pushing short, all the longs.
Yeah.
So he's pushing half the amount in the short distance, pushing back and all my longs.
So, and I meant to do this a while ago when you were excited, because you said you were excited about the lot traffic signal. So to pump you up even more, that light's fixing to come on out there.
Oh, yeah, I did.
Okay. All right. And they've also, Jacob and I, in a very Jacob Burton way, which is pretty cool, Lardot was out there when I, you know, with him, trying to make him move that, that pedestal, which is gone. Uh, Jacob comes over off his dozer and goes, hey, by the way, can you paint some lines here? And it's not for a turn lane just to get into his businesses or library as, as been reported, but it is, it is for the safety of that whole intersection.
They were painting.
Lardot painted an extended turn lane up around. They took the pavement that was there and, and redid the lines, so.
You know, we can take that light that's out there for no reason and move it to one of our heads up life around somewhere. That one's useless. All it does is stop the yield traffic from going into all okies and going into a little lawn.
All right. Anything else?
Nick, we need to, uh.
Oh, sorry. We have a.
We need approval on Connor's invoice, please.
How about that motion?
Second.
Motion second to approve the invoice.
Brown.
Yes.
Andrew.
Yes.
Harry.
Yes.
Ray Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Daniel.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
Thank you.
Lady Locher, dear.
Sorry. Thank you. Danielle, you got one.